Good evening. Can I ask everybody to come to order? We're going to go ahead and call the City Council meeting to order. This is the City Council's regular meeting, Monday, August 20th, at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mahia.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Protempo.
Present.
Mayor Edgar.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Graham Mahia and stay standing for the invocation by Mayor Protempo.
Hand over your heart, please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please bow your heads. As we come together this evening, we are excited to honor the athletes with us, both the U.S. Women's Water Polo Olympic Gold Medal winners and the Championship Pony Western World Series Mustang All-Star Team. We are thankful for the gifts of talent that you have given all of them. Before our next meeting, the children of our community will be going back to school, and we ask your guidance for each of them to have a meaningful, rich school season. Our prayers remain with the men and women of our armed forces abroad and at home and are grateful for their service to our country. We are thankful for the opportunity to serve this community and ask your guidance as we work through this evening's agenda. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right. We've got a really exciting evening tonight for presentations, so let me let everybody know how this is going to go down. We have three presentations, the Certificate of Recognition to the USA Women's Olympic Water Polo Team for winning the gold medal, and I'd have to say yeah for that one. After that, I'm going to go ahead and give a presentation of certificates with the council for the Mustang nine-year-old C-Team All-Stars for winning the Pony Western World Series. So that one. And then lastly, while we're up there, we've got Todd Seymour from the Cypress City Council and also a member of the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and he's going to present an award for us, and we'll do that at the end. So at this time, I'm going to ask the City Council to go ahead and join me at the podium. Okay. First, what I'd like to do, is this mic on? What I'd like to do is I'd like to go ahead and ask the Olympic team, the coaches and their staff to come up here and join us. On behalf of the City of Los Alamos City Council, I'd like to congratulate the USA Women's Olympic Water Polo Team on the first-ever gold medal earned at the London 2012 Olympic Games. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to read the commendation from the city. The Olympic Games only occurs once every four years in the most prestigious and highest level of competition in the world. The Team USA took home their first-ever gold medal after a flawless finish at the London 2012 Olympic Games with a victory over Spain in the gold medal round. The U.S. went unchallenged the entire tournament, winning five of their games and tying in one game, including three preliminary matchups, quarterfinals, semifinals, and the gold medal round. When the Women's Water Polo Competition was introduced as an Olympic sport in 2000, Team USA won their first silver medal, and over the last two Olympics, the women brought home the bronze in 2004 and the silver in 2008. This year, Los Alamos community watched as the women team traveled from our backyard to the International Olympic Stage and captured the gold medal. Los Alamos is very proud of the USA Women's Olympic Water Polo Team for being great role models for the Los Alamos community and their heart, dedication, commitment, teamwork, and athleticism and sportsmanship. Therefore, I Troy Edgar, the mayor of the City of Los Alamos, on behalf of the City Council, resolved to honor and commend the USA Women's Olympic Water Polo Team on their tremendous triumphs in the game of the Olympics. We've also got certificates of recognition and honor of the gold medal winners and our athletes. So what I'd like to do is I'm just going to read one of these, and I'm going to present these to our two gold medal athletes that are here. Yeah, look at that, isn't that beautiful? As a certificate of recognition for the USA Women's Olympic Water Polo Team, we wanted to recognize you capturing the gold medal at the London 2012 Olympic Games. The City Council congratulates you in your outstanding team performance and commends your dedication, perseverance, and athleticism on your drive to be the women's best water polo team in the world. This award goes to Jennifer Adams. Let's try that again. This award goes to Annika Dries. And this award goes to Heather Petrie. And this goes to the assistant coach, Heather Moody. And this goes to the head coach, Adam Krikorian. And this goes to the assistant coach, Dan Klett. Okay. Again, congratulations on the win. We're all very excited, the path you took to achieve gold. Something that I thought would be interesting for the community, you know, as the mayor, we get a lot of questions, everybody's been very excited about this opportunity, so we've got a couple of questions, if you guys wouldn't mind, and starting with you, Coach Adam Krikorian, could you please tell us a little bit about your experience over the past few months in preparing for the Olympic Games and the path during the Games that led to the Olympic gold?
Wow. How long do these usually go here? Whoa, whoa, how about that? You know, it's a very unique experience. You invest, you know, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking on behalf of all the coaches and staff and athletes. You invest so much time and energy and thought, and obviously, not so much in my case, but the athlete's case, so much physical energy, that it's overwhelming and it's exhausting and it's, but at the same time, you just have this feeling on the lead-up to it, that it's something so, so special. You know, one of the best ways I can describe the feeling as you prepare for it is, on numerous occasions, I'd find myself in my car, and I'd just be brought to tears. I'd be by myself, and I'd be brought to tears. And I was tearing because it's such an honor to represent your country, and such an honor to represent the staff and the athletes that are involved, and maybe I'm also crying because I'm just really tired. But it's that, it's that of an emotional experience, and then when you get to the Olympic Games, the energy and the enthusiasm and the spirit is unlike anything that I've ever witnessed, and it's about two and a half weeks of a full rush and adrenaline, and then when you get back home, you just, you kind of want to do it again. But it was a great experience. At the same time, I don't know if I'd trade it for the position that these young men are right here. Those were some of the best days of my life, wearing baseball hats and playing a little baseball. But we certainly couldn't have done it without the great support of this city. The city's been wonderful to us, and you know, wherever we go, you know, wherever we eat, or whatever business, you know, we hit up in Los Alamos, everyone treats us with so much respect and so much love, and when you train as hard and you work for something as much as we did, to have that respect, you know, makes you feel really welcome and loved, and it allows us to, in my opinion, allows us to really reach our potential. So I also want to thank the City of Los Alamos for their support over the years, and hopefully we can do this again.
Okay. Next question, assistant coach Heather Moody. You're not getting out of this. This was your first Olympics as a coach, and just four years ago, you were a player on the team. After all of your hard work as a player, is it as satisfying as a coach to be a part of the Olympic gold medal-winning team? Come on up. Yeah.
Actually, it's my second Olympics coaching. In '08, I was an assistant coach under Guy Baker, so, and we got silver. But the experience as a coach, it's definitely worth it. Just the, as Adam said, the overall enthusiasm and the overall support that you get and you get to do, it's, there's no questions at all to answer that. As an athlete, you work really, really hard in the pool, and you put in tons of time, and you're there, and you have control of part of that, like outcome, because you're in the water. As a coach, I still haven't adjusted to not being in the water, having a little bit of control of the outcome, so sitting on the side of the pool has been definitely difficult in times of wanting to be in there and going, okay, you can add something. So just adjusting to that and giving your tidbits on the sidelines and giving them to the athletes has been definitely rewarding, and I would love to continue doing what I'm doing, giving back to the sport that's given me so much.
Heather Petrie. One of only, let's see, one of only two four-time Olympic medalists on the team. Can you describe how winning the gold medal differs from your experience in the past three Olympic Games?
Well, that's an easy one. Clearly, we got the result that we wanted. But in terms of the teams, I mean, there's not much difference, except for the fact that the girls on the team are different. But you come every quad and put your heart and soul into trying to get to the Olympics and making people at home proud, and we're super proud to represent the United States. So in terms of training for different Olympics, they're pretty much the same, and I think what makes it that much more special is that we've been training here in Los Alamos since 2000, and you guys have provided us a home to make that happen, and I'm glad that this year we were able to do that. Oh, and before I go, I have a ball, a signed ball from the team for you guys, so thank you very much.
Next up, Annika Dries. This is your first Olympics. Can you tell us a little bit more about your experience?
So when you get to the Olympics, there's a lot of energy in one place, and I think it can be kind of overwhelming, especially if, you know, as a first-time Olympian, I was looking up to these girls, and been here for quite some time, building a legacy of the sport. But finally, to get there and then to jump in that competition pool with my 12 other teammates, you know, the energy that we also bring from this community, I mean, we worked so hard every single day in that pool, and to be quite honest, you know, in those final moments of the game and stuff, I'm just visualizing all the practices we had here at home in this community, and it's quite an amazing feeling to, you know, be in such a place with so much energy, but then find a calm among the storms. So it was pretty fun to experience this with Petrie. She's come from 2000 until now, and I'm so happy that we could bring home the gold, so.
Obviously, as a city, we're extremely proud of you and all the women on your team. You know, just to kind of go off the script a little bit, you know, this pool, a lot of people ask questions, is what is the exact relationship between the water polo team and the city? The city, many years ago, put a tremendous amount of money into the pool. At that time, it was just an empty area that had tadpoles swimming in it. We invested, as a city, a tremendous amount of money to put, to really fix up that pool. Marilyn Poe, who is on our city council, was here at that time, and there was a tremendous amount of leadership early on in our city that said this was something that was important. I don't know of any people in our community that haven't had their kids go through child safety training in that pool between there and the high school, and we did it because I believe we wanted to invest to make sure that we had a safe place for the community. During that transaction, we had a council at that time, a county supervisor in Jim Silva, who is now obviously our state assemblyman, that started making connections with people that could bring a water polo team into our city. They are a group that actually helps by being a client in our pool to help us be able to afford it. Think about how small as Los Alamos we can afford to have an Olympic-sized pool, and because that they come and they bring their team and their money to kind of help us maintain our pool, we're able to provide the entire community, Los Alamos, Rossmore, Seal Beach, a place to come and to really take advantage of this. They are one of the biggest contributors, and when it comes to donating funds to the pool, and because of their presence, it helps us continue to raise money in the nonprofit world, too. So without you guys being our anchor tenant in the pool, we would not have a lot of the community events that we're able to have. So the community and the City of Los Alamos wants to thank all of you guys, especially you, Coach. Thank you again for everything. Talking about Assemblyman Silva, what I'd like to do, I'd like to ask Ronnie Guyer to come up and join me from Assemblyman Silva's office.
An exemplary example of the community working together, both civilian and military, dry and wet, you have a marvelous result of individuals who have given us the example of what it is to live your passion at any age, and look what can happen. The gold comes upon you no matter what, no matter whether you're my age, their age, little age, medium age, championships, and gold in your life comes when you just release and let yourself be yourself and let yourself follow your passion at any age. On behalf of the people of California and Assemblyman Jim Silva, who is so very proud of you and grateful that you have all lived your passion and set this kind of example for all the rest of us, I would like to present this beautiful certificate of recognition from the people of the State of California honoring your bringing the gold not only to the United States and to California, but to a most deserving city of Los Alamos. The example of living your passion at any age has been goldily set. Thank you.
Marilyn, you were here when we initiated the pool. Would you like to make a couple of comments, since you outdated all of us up here?
I outdated everyone in the room, I think. Yes, when Ron Bates came to, called me one day and said, "Meet me out at the pool, at the base. I have an idea." And from that point, the council at that time got 100% behind rehabbing the pool out there, saw that this was an opportunity for something really good for our community. We have had, as has been said, Jim Silva was instrumental. We have had the General Portanti at the time was very, very willing to work with us, and every general that's been out at the base has also been on board with making this a place that we could have an Olympic team like this. And I was looking back at some of the pictures and plaques that were just recently brought to my house, because I'm going to take them to the museum, because the team has been in the museum, and so that they can be honored always, and people in the community can always see these pictures. And I see some of the same faces in there, right there, and I remember going to luncheon with the girls eight years ago, as they were getting ready to go. And I still think, because I had my alarm set for 2:00 in the morning when you were in Sydney, you got the gold, I'm sorry. The silver you brought home, but that buzzer did ring. You were in there, I think so. Anyway, it has been, for every council that I've been on since that time, we have been so, so pleased to be able to provide this place for the kind of things that you have accomplished, and this community is so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Would you guys like to get in for a picture with us real quick? That was very special. I want to move to our next award presentation that's also very special. Can I ask the Mustang nine-year-old C-Team to join us up here? All right. So let's go ahead. First of all, what I'd like to do is congratulate these young men for their great, great job in their World Series quest. I'm going to read the certificate, and then what I'd like to do is I'll call out each person by their name, and we'll give them their certificate, I'll shake their hand, and then if you guys could, just come up, grab your certificate, shake your hand, and go back, and then we'll take a picture when we're all done. First up, let me go ahead and read this. "In recognition of winning the Pony Western Region World Series in the nine-year-old division, the City Council congratulates you in your outstanding performance and commends you on your dedication and talent." So again, congratulations. First up, Nick Raiso. All right. Chase Centano. Centino? He's not here. Hawaii. I want to be there with him. Okay. Jared Anderson. Okay, yeah, sorry. Ken Bamberg. Okay, Ken. Why don't you stay up here because I'm going to ask you to say a couple. Oh, yeah. Next up, Tony Hooper. And Jamal Childress. Coach, if you wouldn't mind coming up, just giving the community a little bit of an idea of the journey, we'd really appreciate it.
Okay, so, you know, we started out and we knew we had a talented team. So the goal from the day one meeting was for these guys to win the World Series. And so, this is ridiculous. Anyway, these guys, you know, it was an absolute treat to coach these guys. This is the most outstanding team I've ever had. They're so talented, they're so, you know, they work so hard and they set a goal to win the World Series and they went on a mission and they accomplished their mission game by game by just absolutely outplaying every team that they saw. These guys, I've never seen a team, you know, you can coach your whole life and never have a team like this that, you know, you can practice for two hours and play your heart out and at the end of practice, you look at these guys and you tell them the practice is over and they get all upset because they want to keep playing. And that's the kind of guys that we had. And so, you know, it was just one of those things where we just had to get focused and stay motivated because it's a long baseball season. And so, all we needed to do, all we needed to do, all we needed to do was just not make mistakes, you know, and just not make more mistakes than the teams that we played. And I grabbed the greatest group of coaches that I could possibly get. And you get so lucky, you know, once in your life when everybody, all the teammates are pals and all the parents are friends and all the dads show up ready to coach. And so, you know, my job was easy. All I had to do was just keep everybody a little bit organized and set people in the right direction and keep these guys from hurting themselves. And so, that's what we did and we had a legendary summer and it really was as good as I had hoped that it was going to be. And it's because of all these guys. And so, they're the heroes, just like the Olympic folks that we saw just recently. But, you know, I just wanted to say that I love this team and I'll never, ever expect to have a team this good ever again in my life. I love it. Go Los Al.
Real men don't cry unless you win the World Series, okay? Good job. Again, let's get a picture with everybody up here and we'll move this out of the way. So Todd, what I'd like to do, yeah, right over here, but yeah. Give you just one moment here. Just again, a reminder to the community, so Todd Seymour, one of our colleagues on the Cypress City Council and somebody that we've been working with for many years, a great guy. Todd, why don't you talk to us a little bit about this award this evening and lend us know?
This award is from the California JPIA, which is the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And it is for the 2012 Risk Management Award. And it's been, it's being presented to the West Cities Police Communication Center, better known as WestCom. WestCom is our police communications for the cities of Cypress, Los Alamos and Seal Beach, doing our police dispatch. And we have no exposure over the time that we've been with the authority. And they have given us this award, Best Overall Performance in the Liability Program, again, because we have not had any exposure or cases against that. So I'm here to present this plaque to the city of Los Alamos as well as, I did it at my own city council in Cypress a few weeks ago. And I was hoping to do it at Seal Beach as well, but their council meetings are the same night as mine, so sorry, I won't be presenting it to them. I'll have Paul, now I can't think of his name.
Paul Phillips.
Paul Phillips, thank you. I'll have Paul Phillips, the director of WestCom, present this to the Seal Beach Council. So on behalf of the WestCom Police Communications Center, which I am currently the chair of, congratulations to the cities of Cypress, Los Alamos and Seal Beach.
Now, call the media back to order. We left off after item number five. We're on item number six, oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks should be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker. I have one card. John Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify for you all, I'm here as an investor in Los Alamos this evening. I'm here representing myself and no other party. I want to make that absolutely clear to you all right now. You all know I have a pretty significant investment with my wife in Los Alamos. And the dialogue that is, seems to be continuing to develop on this side of the, on this side of the bar here, is getting out of control. I want to tell you all and look you all in the eye that this is not doing the community any good. It's not doing me any good in trying to, you know, work my own business, my wife's practice in the city of Los Alamos. Every time these negative things get published in the paper goes far beyond Los Alamos. This has got to stop. I'm asking you, each one of you, it has gotten far too personalized. The attacks on each other have got to stop. I don't know where you're going to draw the line, but at some point, you're going to have to make nice with each other and go from there. I do understand, I've been on the city council before, I do understand you have many legal considerations in front of you, but the bottom line is this, it's not the business of the community. It seems to be your personal business that you're trying to play out here. And that's not doing the rest of us any good, I don't think. You know, this is all going back to this trash contract thing, the trash contract franchise that's, that we've, you've all been talking about for a number of months. I want to draw your attention to two facts. Year one, trash price goes down. Period. Bottom line, contract, trash price goes down. Correct? Item two, as I understand it, Consolidated offered to lock in a five-year rate plan. And does anybody want to confirm that for me? I mean, I know I'm not supposed to be asking you all questions, but I think that item was confirmed. And if you can get that kind of a bid and that kind of a deal out of any other trash contractor or bidder, I encourage you to do so. I know some of the finer points of the trash contract, I've read and dissected it a couple of times and I don't have the time to stand up here and talk about it all night. But that is the bottom line. Lowest responsible bidder means just that. It doesn't mean lowest bidder, it means lowest responsible bidder. And that means that the folks like you sitting on that side of the, on that side of the bar here, it's up to you to qualify the contractors. And I don't, personally, if I was sitting there, I probably would have gone with Consolidated myself. And I don't think there are too many people in this community that think that I'm an unreasonable person. So I'm asking you all to just put your personal feelings aside with this. You have an election coming up, you're going to, some of you are going to have to deal with new people. We already know that, you know, some folks of the council will not be here. I understand that there's, you know, it's politics. There's already going to be a little bit of a lining going on behind the scenes. But please, you know, when you go home tonight, please take this very seriously into consideration. Stop. It's not doing the rest of us any good. Okay, the second thing, on to the telephone users tax. We have, city council has $350,000 plus to figure out how to use constructively. I would say two things about that. If you have any unfunded liabilities, pensions, bills, anything, that's got to be your first priority. Period. You may even want to consider overfunding your pension liabilities. It's something that's not done very often. It is done, but you can't gauge future investments and you have, you can't look into a crystal ball and determine what kind of return you're going to get on your pension investments down the road. So it might be seen as a good investment. You might also want to take a look and just walk around your own property here. Some of this property is in a state of disrepair. I don't know why anybody would be considering giving any of the money to somebody to start a street fair or something. I was asked by somebody the other night whether or not I would participate in that. And I said, "Well, you don't have the money yet." And if there are that many people that are going to be interested in doing some side of a, some sort of a fair or something, or some sort of an event, then you need to get out and solicit the private sector. And if there are enough people that want to get on board, they will do that. But to take some of this money and throw it into something is an unknown. It's a dark hole to me. So I guess I'll stop there. I'm asking you each, as somebody who has a significant investment in this community, I don't live in or reside in this community because at this point in time, I can't afford to. But we need to put some of the personal issues aside and get on with the business of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Go ahead. Yeah, come on up.
I am not at all prepared, but I want to thank him so much because I have a daughter that lives in Seal Beach, I have a daughter that lives in Rossmore, and we have friends in Cypress and all the communities around. And our city is getting a terrible reputation. It just really disturbs me so much and so much of it is over this stupid fight over the trash contract. That was a good contract and everybody I've ever talked to in this city, except one man who apparently is a property developer and comes up here and screams about it, everybody thinks that's a good thing. And our city now is getting a surplus, a surplus we can spend on something we really need. And you need to take that in consideration. Part of that is because of that good trash contract. So I hope this fighting stops. And by the way, I would like to see that money used for maybe some bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, John.
Well, I have just something by way of an announcement and I think it's something that we all can agree on. I think we all agree, especially after the events of the last few weeks and what transpired tonight, the, we can all be proud of our Olympic pool at the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Alamos and our USA National Olympic Water Polo Training Center. I think that, I think we all can agree, that was money well spent. And Mayor Edgar, you alluded to some of its historical past in the presentation you made earlier. I'd just like to punctuate that by saying to the folks out there that LATV, and in conjunction with the city of Los Alamos, has produced a documentary on the pool that elaborates the entire history of the pool. We all, in one way or another, have some experience with the base pool. But how many of us really know the full historical perspective on the pool? LATV has taken on that in an hour and 15-minute documentary. And we present that Friday night at 6:00 on LATV. We hope that you'll all participate and take a look at that because it is quite a Cinderella story, parallel to the Cinderella story of the women who received the gold medals that were here tonight. So I hope everybody can tune in and get the full story on the pool on LATV.
Great. Thank you, John. Good evening, Richard.
Good evening. Apparently, John and I got the same memo because I'm here to talk about the same issues. Really is not, especially, I'm going to get this right here. In, with all the good feelings that just went on here, to contrast that with item 11 today is night and day. It's not my habit to discuss individual council people, but Mayor Stevens, Councilman Stevens, former Mayor Stevens, said it perfectly when he said about the council, "We're amateurs up here. We're not lawyers, we're not professional politicians." This, it's time to put this behind us. I asked the council to do whatever is possible to put an end to this endless game of tag. Eventually, for a game of tag to end, somebody has to quit. Please figure out how that happens. We now only have one meeting a month. The amount of energy and time that goes into this issue has reached well, well beyond the point of diminishing returns. I understand that egos have clashed and feelings have been hurt. But at this time, this should be a dead issue. The only thing that keeps us alive is the constant review of the same issue. If we could just get past this, we could go on to some real issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other speakers? Good evening, Jim.
Mr. Hager, you seem not to understand the difference between being a victim and being the bully. When you use your position for bogus legal sex on the only two Asian members of the city council, you are not the victim, you are the bully. When you use your position to remove planning commission, planning commission chairman who disagrees with something you are pushing through for someone who sits on boards with you, they are the victim, you are the bully. When a traffic commission chairman speaks up against your position as a citizen in council comments and you remove him from the commission, he is the victim, you are the bully. When you push through a vote with your majority to threaten that person's livelihood for speaking out his opinion, he is the victim, you are the bully. When you are running the city council majority for four years, you are not the victim, we are. You, sir, are the bully. When you fail to listen to Mr. Sheridan's advice... Eventually, for a game of tag to end, somebody has to quit. Please figure out how that happens. We now only have one meeting a month. The amount of energy and time that goes into this issue has reached well, well beyond the point of diminishing returns. I understand that egos have clashed and feelings have been hurt, but at this time, this, this should be a dead issue. The only thing that keeps us alive is, is the constant review of the same issue. If we, if, if we could just get past this, we could go on to some real, real issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other speakers? Good evening, Jam.
Mr. Edgar, you seem not to understand the difference between being a victim and being the bully. When you use your position for bogus legals, legal sects on the only two Asian members of the city council, you are not the victim, you are the bully. When you use your position to remove planning commission, planning commission chairman who disagrees with something you are pushing through for someone who sits on boards with you, they are the victim, you are the bully. When a traffic commission chairman speaks up against your position as a citizen in council comments and you remove him from the commission, he is the victim, you are the bully. When you push through a vote with your majority to threaten that person's livelihood for speaking out his opinion, he is the victim, you are the bully. When you are running the city council majority for four years, you are not the victim, we are. You, sir, are the bully. When you fail to listen to Mr. Sheridan's advice and the citizens sue the city, you claim victimhood and wore it like a mantle. You claimed you were a victim of concerted political effort that was without merit. When a superior court judge ruled the citizens were in fact correct, you said nothing. The case had merit and you were not the victim, but the perpetrator of what they had claimed. It was not political as you claimed. You were held responsible for your reprehensible actions against the interests of the community. You weren't the victim, you were the bully, and you were called out for it. In last week's News Enterprise, you again whined that you were the victim. This time, the minority wanted to discuss enforcing the municipal code in relation to the findings of the judge. Again, Mr. Majority Troy Edgar, the man with all the power claimed victimhood and singing from the same hymn, it was all political attacks. The attempt to hold you responsible for your actions makes you the victim. You who have the power and have used that power to bully anyone who got in your way was again crying crocodile tears on how the little people were picking on you. Mr. Edgar, I spend this time of year working as a coach, teaching 11-year-old boys how to play football. We work the heck out of them, and they don't whine and snivel as much as you. They stand up and take responsibility when they miss a play. Abuse of power and being a bully is something you do very well. Mr. DeBolt was your victim. Mr. Sheridan was your victim. Mr. Parker was your victim. Mr. Kuzamoto was your victim. The businesses of Los Alameda were your victims. And you who wraps himself up in the shroud of victimhood whenever you are called to task for your actions, you are the bully. Mr. Edgar, look to your right. At the end of the dais there is a man who has insisted that he have his day in court to be cleared of the charges made against him or have the charges dropped. Like Mr. Sheridan, you and your majority continue to hold his good name hostage with a sword hanging above him, a cloud you won't clear, won't let him clear his name. That is being a bully, and the man on the end is the victim of bullying. When you have run for public office, you made quite a big deal out of saying you're a Navy submariner. That's sort of like being an Army Ranger. You have to go to a special school and graduate and get your dolphins, a very special honor. I find it amazing that you, who have made this claim of having been a submariner, who had to have attended and graduated from that special school in Groton, Connecticut, don't learn a thing about either honor or accepting responsibility, not even to the level of my 11-year-old football players. It is enough to make me wonder if you ever did get your dolphins. You whine about how unfair things are, but you never seem to take personal responsibility for your actions, not very honorable and not what submariner school teaches. A number of special meetings have been called. They were called by the minority. They were called in accordance to the terms that the minority and majority agreed to when the majority agreed to one council meeting per month. You and your majority have made a farce of the agreement by refusing to show up and address these concerns. There is a clear case of bullying the minority and a violation of the pacts that had been reached. City Attorney, when the pact was reached a few months back, you asked if I would drop my charges of Brown Act violations against members of the majority. I agreed to formally withdraw them at that time in the spirit of the pacts. That spirit has been one-sided. Police consider them resubmitted and request that they be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. It is time for Mr. Edgar to be held responsible for his clear belief that he is above the law. Honor demands it. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, Jam. Any other speakers? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to the register of major expenditures. Can I get a motion for the, for the register?
Make a motion to move it.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Graham Mahia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuzamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protempo?
Aye.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye. Next up is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless the city council member requests separate action item, action on a specific item. I've gotten one request from Jerry. She's pulling approval of minutes, item A. Do I have anybody else that wants to pull anything?
Just one other, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Just for a real quick comment. Item D.
Okay.
And that's it. And I'll make a motion to remove the remainder if there are no other council members who would like to pull.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. We're gonna go first to item 8A, approval of minutes. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
I've spoken already with the city clerk, and what I'd like to do is on page 5 of 16, the third paragraph from the bottom, just have a little bit more information as to what was said included. I've told her, if she'd go back and review, that I said some things with regards to breaking up the areas into smaller portions so that nonprofits, maybe at the schools or, you know, in the community, would be able to do those. It would be a feasible fundraiser for them as opposed to having to do the entire city. I would just like to see if we could have that included.
That's 8G.
Let me go back, Mayor, I apologize. I should have given you more. Yes, it is 8G.
All righty.
And then on page 9 of 16, and that is 9B, there's a list of bullet points on page 8, and it continues on to page 9 at the top. I would just like to see if we couldn't include, one of the reasons that we were interested in pursuing the things that were on the agenda item for the give-back were that we didn't want them to be the city business as usual. We didn't want the general fund responsibilities to be taken up by this money. And so I asked if she could include those for me. And then on the, page 15 of 16, and it would be under council announcements, under my own, it's about the fourth paragraph or fifth paragraph down, I just would like to have a little bit more information included there. It's with regards to me not being a part of the vote for the UUT. And if we could do that, those are the only things that I have, and I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns with Jerry's changes, 8G, 9B, and her council-directed comments in regards to the TUT?
I would just like to know what, what you want included in that portion.
On the last?
Yes.
The last item. I was very specific about, I wasn't comfortable, in the ballot measure for the TUT, I was recused due to a conflict. And so in the ballot measure, it says it was a unanimous vote, but it wasn't a unanimous vote. It was actually a 4-0-1 because I abstained. And I'm a little uncomfortable with the community believing that I support that measure because I do not.
But I think it said unanimous vote of members present.
Yeah, but I think that's a little misleading because you would assume that all members are there. I mean, if it were one of you, I think you would feel the same if you were opposed to the ballot measure. So I would just like that to be clarified.
Okay. These are council-directed comments, and these are your words, and as long as they don't stray from the tape.
Yeah, I mean, whatever's in the, in the recording.
Okay. So I'll make a motion for Jerry's changes.
Point of order, I have some comments.
Oh, sure. Sorry. Go ahead.
So on page 11 of 16 of the minutes, when Jerry Graham Mahia, as a resident, spoke, I think it is incorrect when it says, second line from the bottom, misleading and ingenuous. I think it's disingenuous.
Oh, it's disingenuous.
I think that's the term there.
Warren, what page again? I'm sorry.
11 of.
16.
Yes.
And what, what paragraph?
Public comment. Jerry Graham Mahia, resident, stated support of.
Okay.
But further down, it says misleading and ingenuous. I believe the word is disingenuous.
Okay. Yep. I get it.
And then with respect to the item which I had recused myself, 10A, there was a phrase that the city attorney had stated. I would like to have that put into this record. I didn't quite catch the word. I was in the back listening. What was the word, city attorney? What came down to exoneration? I think he used a Latin phrase. Said no proof of exoneration. What was the word? So we go back to the tape and review that, please? And I'd like that included in the minutes.
I don't remember using any Latin phrase, but I'm happy to have whatever phrase I did use included in the minutes.
Because I think Councilmember Graham Mahia was asking about, were there any grounds for exoneration? I think you came up with a word, and I didn't quite catch it, so.
Okay.
And then finally, in council comments, I did ask some questions regarding the relationship between Stephen Barick and Mayor Troy Edgar. I'd like that all included, verbatim, if I may, please. My words. And there was a question of city staff about how it was selected. I believe that the city attorney said she recommended to the city manager that Barick Trent Meisiger should be hired for this special prosecution of me.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with Councilmember Kuzamoto's changes? I'll make a motion for his changes to be accepted. And I'll tell you what, I'll amend my original motion to also make do for Councilmember Kuzamoto's changes. Jerry, I think you had seconded. Are you, I guess you?
I was just saying that I didn't oppose his, his changes.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Next up, race on the base management contract. Jerry, you had a question on that?
Oh.
Point of order?
Okay. I'm sorry.
I believe, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. The only question I have is, we're going to have a contract with them for five years. I just wanted to verify, Angie, is that to lock in the price that they're offering us now? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I know that I read the contract, and it says that, you know, we can dismiss them at any time, they can do so with us. I just wanted to make sure that that was the thought process behind it. I have no other item or issue with the item, and I make a motion to carry it.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. I think that's it. So now we're gonna head into public hearing, section nine. First item, public hearing, supplemental law enforcement services fund, or slash, city manager.
Hand it over to Chief Mattern.
Good evening, Mayor Edgar, members of the city council. Once again, we expect to receive $100,000 from the supplemental law enforcement services fund. This annual state funding is intended to enhance public safety and can be used to increase the number of officers in the community, or it can be used to implement crime prevention or youth diversionary programs. The funds may be used on personnel or equipment, but they may not be used to supplant existing funding for law enforcement services already provided by the city. Ever since the fiscal year 2000, 2001, when we began receiving our current share of $100,000, we've designated these funds to pay for our overfill motorcycle officer, which is dedicated solely to traffic enforcement. Once again, staff is proposing that we designate these funds for this purpose, so the staff recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, adopt the included resolution, and to accept SLESF allocation in the amount of $100,000 into account number 22.4340, an appropriate $100,000 transfer to the general fund to fund the motorcycle officer.
Great. I'll bring it back to the council. Does anybody have any questions before I open up to a public hearing?
No.
All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public like to make any comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. I'm gonna see if there's no other comment. I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Make a motion for the recommended action by staff.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Next item, discussion items, item 10. 10A, information technology strategic plan. Angie, hand it to you.
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Cassie Palmer, who administers our IT contract.
Good evening, Cassie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm gonna provide an overview to you of our information technology strategic plan, and then I'm gonna go back through and actually apply it to a project so that you can see how it actually works. The strategic plan is a tool for our decision-making process. We'll use it as a guideline, so it's not developed so that it can sit on a shelf. It's something we're actually gonna use if you adopt it tonight, and it'll help us through some of those decision-making processes when new technology comes along or we need to replace something. If you look at the, the list up here, the, the last three bullet points, you're gonna see a consistent theme throughout the plan where those are mentioned. Controlling costs, improving efficiency and customer service, and providing public access to information are all points that you'll see revisited throughout the plan. To give you a little look at the scope of our plan, these are some of the items that are represented by the information technology definition. Basically, if I, if I was just to define it for you, we'd be looking at any of the conduits to process, store, transmit, or receive information. We use it a little bit loosely here as we include most technology, not just the information technology. And you'll hear me use information technology or IT interchangeably throughout the presentation. Why we need an information technology strategic plan. In our city, we have competing priorities. Different departments have different needs. Having a plan gives us some, some direction so that we can work together to strategize how best to approach those issues. We have limited resources, whether it be personnel or our funding, so we have to work together to determine which resources are gonna be used in which way. Also, if you look at the escalating costs, you know, more and more of our technology or of our processes are becoming automated, so the costs continue to grow. We need to find a way to control those costs. Also, looking at whether or not certain things are essential to business, if we want to stay in business, certain things will have to be implemented because it's a part of doing business in today's society. And then the final thing up there, on the tipping point, would be the fact that technology is evolving exponentially, and trying to keep up with how fast. We need a mechanism by which we can evaluate and incorporate new technology. So the basic components of the plan are listed above. If you see the mission, that's basically what we want to accomplish. Our goals are how we're going to accomplish that mission. And then we move across to our objectives, which are actually our work plan. And then finally, the benchmarks, that's how we're gonna evaluate how we did and if we accomplished what we set out to do. Starting with our mission, this probably looks familiar to you as it's the, the mission that's been listed under IT in our city's budget for quite some time. But once again, you're gonna notice those, those consistent theme points of customer service, improving efficiency, reducing operational costs. I actually prefer to think of that as trying to control costs because there's very few areas where we actually see a reduced cost benefit. But needless to say, that's, that's our effort in that, in that point. And again, the access to public information. The plan has seven strategic goals, and starting with the first one, moving in a collaborative and proactive direction, you'll see that we're, we're no longer being reactive. For a long time, our application of IT was strictly a reactive basis. We just kept things running as long as we could. Well, now we're looking to be a little more proactive by strategizing some things, doing some brainstorming. One of the mechanisms for this is our IT steering committee. That committee started when we actually did the RFP for our new IT contract. We found that we were successful when we started using this collaborative effort and decided to keep it going. So now we meet monthly. The president of our IT support company participates. The chief technology officer participates in this, as well as one of their technicians. And they don't charge us for that service, they just participate as part of the contract. The second goal is improving access to local government. You know, when we look at, at this, there are ways that we need to, to implement the new technology, but at the same time balance the approachable face-to-face contact that we have in our small town. I can give you an example of some technology that was implemented years ago that really wasn't suited, at least not at that time, to our city's character. We implemented an automated service ticket program and spent thousands of dollars on it. It wasn't used enough to merit the use of it. It ended up being like $60 per service ticket a year on average. So we discontinued the, the use of that product. But, you know, whether it was just before its time or whether it's because it took away from that face-to-face contact. So our challenge is really to balance how we can provide information to anyone, anywhere, anytime, but also provide that one-on-one if somebody would prefer to just pick up a phone and talk to that familiar voice at City Hall that they're used to speaking to. Goal number three is reducing risks and limiting the city's exposure. There's two major categories for this. One is a service provider, anywhere that our residents or community members access the network can become a portal for hackers to get in, so we really need to be vigilant about protecting our system. We're not only protecting the information in our system, we're also protecting our residents and the information that's tied to them that's in our system. And then the other is a disaster recovery plan, and I'm actually going to talk about two different forks of that plan. One being if we have system failure and the network needs to be backed up, where we can reinstall the information, we don't lose the information. The other part of that would be if we had a major disaster and we had to start up City Hall somewhere else, and it would be more of a, you know, a continuity of operations plan at that point. Goal number four is improving staff efficiency. And I'm going to use an old cliche here and talk about working smarter, not harder. That's especially important in our economic climate, where we've got a recession and we're using limited resources, and we've tried to right-size our staffing level and everybody is readjusting their work product. You know, one of the things that's best to focus on here, in addition to the automation, is looking at our improved workflows and what we can do better. And that's one of the things that's in the plan, is to go through and actually look at the different jobs in the city and look at ways that we can either automate, streamline, or maybe do them better so that people are more efficient. Goal number five is implementing cost-effective solutions. Probably the most important thing here is equalizing the cost by greater efficiency and productivity. That's viewing technology as an asset, getting money back or saving the money by implementing something that is going to outweigh the expenditure, and that's what we're going to try to do. Looking at some of the funding strategies there as well, you know, whether we can find grants for some of the things that we need to implement, our special funds, some funds are restricted where we can use those, and perhaps implementing amortization schedules and things like that. Goal number six is recognizing the rapidly changing landscape of technology. You know, I think I've mentioned this before, students are going to college and they're training for jobs that don't even exist yet. When they graduate, they're going out into a field to do something that's so new. So looking at that or anticipating that really becomes a key part of what our IT Steering Committee is going to be doing. That brainstorming is going to be really important. We want to make sure that we're not investing in technology that's soon to be outdated. And this is perhaps my favorite of the strategic goals, and that's the expenditure justification. This particular goal ties all of the others together and actually provides a procedure for us to go through so that we have consistent criteria for evaluating what we're going to implement, what the cost is. It helps us perform a cost-benefit analysis. Now, not all the categories that I'm going to go to are going to be applicable, applicable in every situation, but you'll find that most of the categories fit in some way or another. Let's take a closer look at that. The form that you see up there is actually an addendum C in your plan. This process, the expenditure justification process, is actually facilitated by that checklist that you see there, and it includes these four major categories. I'm going to go into more detail about those in a little bit. The last part of the plan, or the last component of it, is the benchmarks, and that's important because that keeps us on track. It's going to help us measure how we're doing, making sure we don't stray from it. It's also the most fluid part of the plan because there are some things in the benchmarks that we're going to completely accomplish and will check off, and they'll no longer be applicable. And there's other things that we're going to continue to do, such as how quickly our IT company responds. And I want to let you know that when I was talking to them about this plan and I had put a percentage down for how fast they would respond to our issues, and they said, "No, up that, we can do better." So, they were pretty ambitious about wanting to provide good service. Now, let's take a look at how all this works. We've talked about the fact that our phone system is going to need to be replaced, so I picked that because that's something we'll be revisiting this year, and there are some benchmarks listed in our plan for that. Okay, the first thing we look at, up here in the corner where the circle is there, you can see we have to identify a need. Well, we have a need. Our new, our phone system is past its life expectancy, so we are going to need a new phone system. We haven't decided what kind of system yet, that's going to be part of the process, and that's where that Steering Committee comes in. We have our IT experts, the city personnel that are involved in the Steering Committee, and we've got the need. So we'll be able to discuss that, we're going to evaluate some products and look at some different options that are out there. When we have some of those options identified, then we're going to take a closer look by going to the next phase, which is our expenditure justifications. Now, I'm going to go into more detail about that. Looking at that checklist that we talked about, this actually becomes a sled to go through the rest of that flow chart that I showed you. The project's got to be efficient and economical, so we'll look at each of these things and ask ourselves which of these, or ask ourselves these questions and see which really fits. You know, reducing redundancy, you know, that's kind of a stretch, yes, taking messages, depending on the phone system and what we go to, yeah, there are some benefits that may be realized there, but probably not as significant as some of the other areas. It certainly automates some of our processes, so I would check that. It should enhance customer service, we're going to find a system that's easy to use for our residents and also efficient for our staff. It's not going to generate revenue, but we will do a cost-benefit analysis because that'll be part of every project, so I would check those off. The second item in those four categories is, does a project address a need? It's not really a safety issue, I could stretch and say it was because we need to have a phone to be able to call, but since we have an off-site dispatch center, I'm not going to check that. It is a department need, I don't know of any of our departments that can work without an efficient telephone system, so I would check that. There's no legislative mandate that I'm aware of. Industry standard, that's something we'll go look at. Not only is it an industry standard to have a good phone system, but we'll go and look at what other cities are doing so that we're not the guinea pigs trying this out. And then whether it's required by another governing entity, you know, I don't really know of any. There are some things, some technology projects will bring forward that are required by a governing entity, or that are required by a legislative mandate. This isn't one of those projects. Whether it's part of a secession plan, that I couldn't really answer yet, but that would be something that we need to implement because there's another part that we're going to implement to get where we want to be later. So it's just like a stepping stone. It will definitely facilitate the dissemination of information to the public and staff. So I would say yes, it's pretty essential for business, at least in some format, even though we haven't determined which format or which type of phone system we're going to go with. The next category is, does it support and/or is it consistent with the City Council's goals or priorities? Well, I'm going to say that it is because I believe that our City Council is very interested in customer service and access to information, or the public's access to information, so I would say it is consistent with that. With our city branding, you know, one of the things that I hear from people, and it always actually makes me feel pretty good to be associated with our city, is they talk about the professionalism when they call and how responsive staff is when they call. And so I think that is consistent with our city branding, to have a phone system that allows that. Our city's IT implementation plan, that's actually our long-term planning, and I believe it's part of that as well. And then finally, is it supporting our IT's overarching mission? Again, that's those things we talked about, automating to control costs or improve efficiency, customer service, or info to the public. And the fourth category is the project supported by a creative acquisition or funding strategy. I wish I could say it was supported entirely by a grant, but unfortunately, I can't. It is, however, a replacement, and we do have technology funds that have been set aside for that purpose. Now, ongoing costs have been considered or will be a part of that package, and you know, even if it was a grant, we would be looking at the ongoing costs because you have to make sure you consider that. Sometimes we can get equipment or things that are free through the grant, but then they could be cost prohibitive based on the, you know, the ongoing costs. And then sometimes it's beneficial to look at leasing options, probably not in this case, but that would be an option. So, let's go back to that flow chart now and ride that sled around, and the next thing is we're going to look at that from an evaluation standpoint. Again, I'm going to refer back to the expenditure justifications, and we're going to decide whether or not the project is merited based on that. So we're actually using it for the evaluation component now. We're going to continue to use it when we talk about our funding strategies and how we want to accomplish that, based on the information that'll be on that checklist. Then we, as we continue down, because this project is more than 1,500, it's going to head down on the arrow into the next category, which is where the department heads are going to get involved in the discussions. Now, there's two ways that the department heads are going to be playing into this. One is, sometimes we have projects that will be competing for the same funding source, and through these discussions, we can come out with what is better serving the city as a whole, and we can actually prioritize which is more important. And when we sit down together and discuss those options, it's a better way to approach it. The other thing would be, in a situation like the phone system, which we're talking about right now, we're looking at scheduling times. You know, obviously recreation scheduling times or their busiest peak times are different than the police department's or than the city clerks. You know, for us, we certainly wouldn't want to be implementing that in November or October, just before the election, when the city clerk would be, you know, affected by a pretty busy phone system if we had, you know, potential for downtime. And then we go down to the City Manager. Now, the City Manager will have been involved in the process. This isn't going to be the first time she's heard about it, but this is the time where she's going to say, "Yeah, I'm feeling good about this," or "No, I'm not, let's go back to square one." So at that point, she's going to tell us whether we keep going or turn around and start all over again. If she says keep going, and in this situation, our phone is going to cost more than $10,000, so we're going to head across this route. Now, the neat thing about this is before we even bring it to the City Council at the next point for authorization, we will have fully vetted it, we'll have all the information right here, so you're going to know what we discussed, how we discussed it, and what conclusions we came to based on that. Then you'll have an opportunity still to authorize the project or not authorize the project. And at that point, you know, we'd do our RFP and continue on. If council approves it at that time, project is scheduled. Taking a real expedited look at how that works, it started with a needs assessment. We take a look at that needs assessment, there's our phone, we need a phone, we get the phone. We've got to look at the different solutions that are out there. Let's say we find that perfect example, we're going to go out and get that going, but we're going to do our expenditure justification first, then we're going to implement our project. Now, remember that that was all part of that expenditure justification, took us all around through that whole chart, okay? Then we've got our project implementation. We're going to go back and monitor how well it's working, hopefully it's working as we planned. And then as we're doing that, we're going to see new technology's going to come along, and pretty soon, we're going to have to upgrade and do something because it's really a never-ending cycle when you're talking about technology. There's always going to be improvements, especially with the speed at which things are turning over and changing in this, in this field right now. So, to wrap up, you know, this process is not going to change any of our purchasing requirements, we're not looking at changing anything in the municipal code or in our city policy for purchasing. It doesn't change the City Council's role in any of our big projects, you're still going to have the same authorization authority you had. What it does provide is a foundation for all of our future decisions regarding technology projects, and it provides that standardized criteria for the evaluation of those projects. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Great, thank you. Well, Cassie, you did a great job on that. You know, there was probably about five things that the City Council had focused on when we went through a vote to bring Angie on board, then we had her transition to City Manager, and one of the items in the top five was this IT Strategy Plan. You know, just a little bit more for the community, when we looked at this too, kind of the underlying, you know, element of success here is the fact that we've outsourced our real technical advice and actual due function to a company that's been a great partner that we've found through this process. And I think doing that, it doesn't lock us into employees in this field that might get, you know, harbored into certain technology, and it makes it harder to bring them along for the journey. This company and the vendors that we're working with change with the technology, and I think that's an important part of your strategy. The only question that I had is, you know, when I looked at the board, your Steering Committee, and the composite of the leadership and the departments, you know, you have the vendor on the Advisory Board of Steering Committee. The question I had is, are they in an ex officio role where they have a vote, or are they just, they are able to provide input?
They're providing input.
Okay, good. And then I also liked how you put together kind of a benchmark scorecard so that, you know, I think the community took a deeper look at your staff report too, and you see that some of the things that a lot of people care about, parks and recreation, being able to register online, you know, the website, you know, that got updated. The phone system obviously is a bit expenditure. You know, when you're sitting up here, whether it's this council or future councils, knowing that that level of due diligence and coordination is going in, and when you're fighting for a project through the CIP process or at the general fund budget at the end of the year, knowing that you guys are going through that, I think makes us all feel a lot better. And I think that's why we really pushed Angie to work with you and to get that done. One little tactical thing that I would tell you guys, as the input that I get the most on the website is our Friday closure date. Everybody loves our new website, but they can't seem to tell, City Hall's open on Friday or night. Before, it used to tell you when you go on there, "Hey, they're open today." I'm not asking you to change it based on an IT strategy, but I would say when I seen that, it reminds me, I probably get that call once or twice a week, so.
We can add that.
I would go ahead and ask anybody else in the City Council, would you guys like to comment or provide feedback on the IT strategy? Marilyn?
Yeah, I had told at the break, Cassie, that I just thought you just did an outstanding job. I really like the expenditure justification, all these processes that you've put in place to go through from A to the final point, I think is going to make it so easy to see the clearer picture of what needs to be done. And I think your staff report was just excellent. Thank you.
Warren?
Thank you. I, too, I think it was a very good presentation. I think I have to say, I didn't get all the report. I downloaded the agenda from the website, and this wasn't in there, so I'm kind of, if you can go back and check that. But listening to this, I just want to make sure, this is a, it is not the strategic plan, it's just the resolution to go create the strategic plan, is that correct?
Actually, this is the IT strategic plan.
Strategic plan, okay, so.
Just for IT.
Well, I didn't have a chance to review it since it wasn't on the website, so I would either have to recuse myself and not vote, I would really like to take a look at that and ask some more questions. I do think it was a very thorough presentation. The questions I have as far as, how often does this get reviewed, the strategic plan, it'll get, I would presume, it gets looked at and perhaps not changed much in its form in future years, but do you have a review cycle that you have planned for this?
Yes, annually, it'll be reviewed.
Okay.
The reason that the benchmarks were included in an addendum rather than the actual plan is we figured those will be updated possibly even more often as they come to fruition.
Okay. And that was all the questions I had, but thank you very much.
Ken, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. Cassie, I've got a question on clarification. You mentioned automated service ticketing or ticketing system that we had before. What was that?
It was called Request Partner, and there was a fairly large investment that went in to putting that in place, and it just didn't take with the community. We had it on our websites, we did press releases, and for whatever reason, a few people used it, but not enough on an annual basis. When you actually calculated the cost for the number of service tickets that came in in a year, it really just wasn't efficient. You know, it didn't accomplish anything for us that using email, as we do now, doesn't do, and the email doesn't cost us anything.
Actually, even with the new system that you're proposing, it probably would even be easier, you know, to get that through. Another statement you made that really intrigues me, you're viewing technology as an asset, and I wonder if you could expand just a little bit more on that. I think I know what you mean, but.
That's using technology or implementing it in a way that it actually saves you resources, so there's a value tied to it. It has a change in the way you actually look at implementing, you look at workflows and things, so that there's actually a dollar or value figure that you're going to tie to those pieces. You know, there are certain things that we do now that could save, we could save money doing those same things if we implement certain pieces of technology. There's processes that are redundant, we have things where people enter things up at. We have things where people enter things up at the city, or, you know, up at the front counter. When they, when people come in, it's manually entered, it's entered again somewhere else. Well, you can enter something, and it'll actually possibly cost you less than the staff time to do those processes. I'm not sure I'm articulating that very well, but.
You did an excellent job. In fact, what I wanted you to, what I was hoping you would say is, number one, it's a time saver, and it's reducing redundancy, redundancy and effort, which, again, is going to be a time saver. So often, without upgrading our technology, we cause a great frustration in the community. And it's our residents trying to get through to us, and anytime we have to have a redundant effort, I guess, for them to be able to do it, it's very frustrating for them. So anything that's going to prevent that make their encounter, or their experience with the city, a lot faster and a lot more pleasurable, I'm in favor of it.
You know, even the process by registering for classes online, where we actually expect that maybe we'll increase our revenue with that, that's all tied to that viewing it as an asset. You know, looking a little more beyond just what it does for you in an automated process.
Most definitely. And I want to thank you again for the presentation, it was excellent, and very informative for all of us.
Sure.
Really quickly, this is some of the best work I've seen. It's so logical and common sense that I just wanted to commend you on it. And I did call in, there was a problem with being able to access, you'd call in, and it'd say, "Enter your code for whatever office you wanted," and then it would disconnect you. And I called in, and you handled it very quickly, so I do think that you're on top of all of this, and I don't think we could have anybody better in place for this, so thank you.
All right. What I'd like to do is go ahead, and if there's no other further comments, I'd entertain a motion for the staff recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, who in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
And I'll abstain for the reason that I didn't get the report. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, next item, item 10B, request for city council review of conditional use permit, 12-01. Angie.
Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. During our July meeting, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit allowing the apartments at 1111 Lexington Avenue to upgrade their main entrance, enclose some ground floor apartment units, patio areas, and to convert the carports into garages. The applicant, architect Greg Howell, is acting on behalf of the Geiger Family Trust, which owned the property, and Greg is in the audience tonight. Council member Graham Mahia had requested that this agenda item be placed on the agenda to consider whether to appeal the conditional use permit. This report addresses a number of things, due process, interpreting the city's code, the potential for appeal, policy regarding carports in general, and maybe conversions of garages, impact upon the apartment owners in their ability to proceed with improving their property, and options available to the council this evening in the staff report. The council member did not herself file an appeal, so there's no official appeal filed regarding this. It's a request to consider that this evening. The council is going to be asked to interpret the code, to clarify procedures, and if any, available to council members. Apply the code as interpreted to council member Graham Mahia's request to determine whether an appeal should be scheduled, and provide direction for future agenda items relating to this issue. First, I'm going to start talking about the topics I introduced earlier. I'm going to start with the due process. Due process of an application's rights requires that a hearing and appeal be impartial and neutral decision makers, by neutral decision makers. Courts have ruled that once a council member declares himself to be an interested party and states a disagreement with the planning commission decision, they negate their impartiality. They've kind of disqualified themselves from participating in the hearing of appeal. You know, you've already stated your position on the appeal, so you can't act as an impartial body when you're up at the dais for the eventual appeal hearing. As a result, a council member who appeals a decision must abstain from that actual hearing if it were to turn into an official applied for an appeal. As a result, cities have adopted another form of ordinance, which is called a call-for-review ordinance, and that allows the council to act without compromising their ability to participate. Now, our code alludes to the word "review" several times, but it doesn't really have a call-for-review ordinance. Chapter 1768 of our code expressly provides for an appeal and sets forth the procedures for filing and processing and reviewing appeal decisions. Council has that section to review, the customers review that section, they understand what the appeal process is before they go into filing a conditional use permit, or a variance, or some other land use entitlement. It's clear, and it's concise, and it also states, "On the 21st day, if no appeals are filed, I am to issue that permit." So there's clear understanding in our appeal procedures of what an applicant has to go through. But, as we all have stated, it does allude to some other things, and the word "to review" is in there. It alludes to, but does not implicitly describe the possibility that council itself can appeal. These both imply that there is some procedure for council not to vote to appeal, but does not describe the process or procedure that a council member would go through to do this process. So the ambiguity allows for interpretation. I think we'll all agree to that, that there's some ambiguity there. Since the code provides for no procedure for the city council to appeal, the simplest interpretation of the code would be that the process available to all applicants is also available to the city council. However, that interpretation will nullify the council's ability to appeal, because it would require that the council articulate a portion of the decision to which it disagrees. Do you understand, we're back to that part where you can no longer be impartial. An alternative interpretation of our code would be that the reference to the city council voting to appeal is actually an attempt to create a mechanism for the council to call the decision for review. Again, that's kind of a loose base interpretation, but we do see the vagueness in the code, and some allowances for that. The problem with this is that the code does not provide an alternative procedure, and one would need to be inferred. We'd be acting on the seat of our pants, or kind of a fly-by-night nature of how to do a call-for-review ordinance because of a lack of formal ordinance that we have in our code. Such a procedure would allow for a deadline, a fee, and a requirement, the council member initiating the process explain how the decision raises matters of sufficient importance for the rest of the council to consider. The city council, therefore, has the following options interpreting the code, so it allows more interpretation here, that interpret the code as providing for the city council to appeal, using the procedures in the code, 1768-020, for applicants and interested parties. This option would essentially view the appeal by the council language as an artifact from an archaic old section of the code that maybe wasn't updated as well as it should. Council has the choice to interpret the code as granting the city council the ability to call a project for review without stating position, and therefore, without establishing bias. Again, it doesn't allow for the specific process related to call for review, so again, we'd be shooting from the hip on that aspect. As noted previously, the council member that would require seeking review would have to identify the decision raised, and describe more in depth why the issue should be of importance to the rest of the city council. The impact upon the apartment owner. Tonight's process has prevented the commencement of improvements on Lexington Arms Apartments. Both the property owner and their architect have issued letters to staff objecting to this continued processing the appeal, and it's stated that the resulting delay and uncertainty may prevent them from continuing their investment in their property. And that's important to note, that a property owner that is investing hundreds of thousands of their dollars to upgrade a property that's nearly 50 years old, is being prevented from continuing in that process. And that doesn't sit well from a customer service standpoint, and it doesn't sit well from an investor standpoint. The architect specifically objects to an appeal made without any explanation as to what is being protested and why. Now, regardless of the action taken this evening, it would appear that the city, and I think we all agree, is in need of a call-for-review ordinance that allows the city council to call things for review without biasing themselves to future decisions if it were to be an appeal. So it allows a separate review outside of the appeal process. So the council would have this tool called call-for-review, the public and the applicant would have a tool called an appeal. Clear differential task, clear differential rules and regulations to follow, a clear understanding of what an applicant's rights are to continue with the process, what the council's rights are into calling for review. That would be codified, and it would be easy for the entire public to understand. Kind of like establishing a target for everyone to shoot at properly. Staff recommends that the city council direct that a call-for-review ordinance be agendized in the future, to allow that council to have that tool for clarity. Now, we also have discovered through this process that maybe there's a process needed regarding carport conversions, that the city council may wish to provide policy direction regarding permissible uses of garages. And that would be an appropriate policy-level discussion for the council to have at this time. If you feel that a certain direction has been done regarding garages, or conversions of carports, maybe some rules or standard conditions need to be applied in our code and codified for, again, all parties to use, and the council to use in the future. And again, moreover, that discussion wouldn't affect this applicant's right to continue with the project, but it would allow the council to move on constructively. Now, some official actions in tonight's staff report allow the council to interpret the code as providing for the council the right to appeal using the procedures that are allowed for everyone else. The second option would be interpret the code as granting the city council the ability to call a project for review without stating the position and the merits, requiring that the council members seek review, seeking review, identify how the decision raises issues, determine that the decision in this case is of sufficient importance to the council, and that they should be involved, and schedule a future meeting at which time all interested parties would be afforded the opportunity to be heard, to also determine that the decision in the case does not raise issue of sufficient importance, that the council ought to be involved, and decline to call this matter to review. There's also the option of directing staff to agendize the future call-for-review, looking at the macro issues, not the micro issues, but let's look at the macro issues at a policy level of what may be the type of tools the council needs in the toolbox to do this properly in the future. And direct staff accordingly to draft that call-for-review. As you all may be aware, a call-for-review ordinance came to you early last year at the direction of our city attorney, and was not, did not go anywhere. The other option would be direct staff to agendize for future discussions the permissible uses of garages, again, on a policy level, not a micro level, that would impact this current applicant. Although options one and two are mutually exclusive, and the council must choose between them, options three and four may be combined with any alternative. You can certainly direct staff at any time to move forward with that call-for-review ordinance, or even the macro issue of looking at garages in general, in apartment row, or in the single-family neighborhoods, and look at garage, carport conversions on a theoretical point of view in the future. With that, that's staff's report. In the packet, you will see a number of attachments, including a section of the code, the requests from the council member, the planning commission's original agenda, and then the revised resolutions showing the conditions, and then also the letter from both the applicant and the actual property owner regarding the report. And should you have any questions, staff is here and available for the council.
Okay, let me do this. I'm going to ask, before we get into this in detail, because I just want to set this up, the applicant, or the representative for the applicant, I would ask, would you like to come up at this point to make any comment, or, I'll afford you that through this whole process, but just to kind of set this up so that we get your perspective before we get further into this.
Well, on behalf of the property owner, we're really looking for a clear path on how to proceed here. We want to know what it is that's being objected to, and if there is any conditions that we can afford in order to correct those objections, we're just interested in clarity at this point. What is being objected, why, and how can we get this project to move forward?
Okay.
So that's where I am at the moment.
Okay. And in a moment, I'm going to turn this over to council member Mahia, who brought this in forward, but something that I would ask for each of us, if we could, because this issue is very compounded, and we've got to kind of break it apart into pieces, and I think that there's three main components of this that I'd like each of us to at least weigh in on. I'm interested in your feedback, so that we can make some progress through this more effectively. The first part was the call-for-review ordinance, yes, no, is that something that you see there that is important? I think Stephen did a great job of explaining it. That is a bigger-picture procedure/policy issue, and if I'm sitting in the applicant's seat, I'm thinking, "That's great, I hope you guys solve that," but that isn't my project, my project's urgent, and I want to go do something. So, but I want to know what your feedback is on that. The second item is the project itself. Jerry, council member Mahia, she will sit down and give us her perspective on the urgent nature and the issues that she sees from her perspective, and I think we should have a collective dialogue to see if we're on board with that. And, you know, regardless of all the stuff that was talked about, if there's something there, I think the council needs to make a decision through one of the paths that's talked about, of how constructively we can go and engage a clear path, as the applicant said, because I think time is of essence here. If there's an issue, let's get down to it. If not, let's waive this project and allow it to go its course one way or the other. And if there's a bigger-picture issue on the call to review, call-for-review, then we'll take that on, and, but, you know, we'll start to kind of separate those a little bit. The last item that was brought up from Stephen is code change for carport conversions. You know, the question was asked, maybe the council wants to take on a policy of how we deal with carport changes, and, you know, what's the rules? You know, kind of, you know, just that perspective is something that the planning commission is looking at, even within the general plan, and, you know, all aspects of our general plan elements. That might be something that we put as a priority that needs to get handled, but again, I would ask that the council separate the most urgent issue, which is, we've got an applicant that's got a real plan, they want to modify a building, they've got other properties in the city, and we need to make sure that, you know, we're trying to balance the fact that, out of respect for council member Mahia, she has a concern, we want to hear it quickly, and if it does affect this project, we want to take care of it, and if it doesn't, we want you to go do your project. And we want you to keep doing it, everything, you know, around here, because we really want to kind of encourage folks. You know, we had, kind of contrasts this, we've got a building and a residential improvement plan where we're trying to incent people to do exactly what you're doing, but we also have council members that are very focused, and they talk to all the folks in the community, and we want to respect that, and make sure that there's not something here we're missing. So again, three items, call-for-review ordinance, the project itself, and the code change as a prioritization within the general plan update. If you would, council member Mahia, please give us your perspective on this project.
Sure, but before we move forward, because there seems to be some stipulations as to if I address this without this being a call-for-review, then I would conflict myself out should we go forward with an appeal. So I would like to address, as you said, the call-for-review. If you go to the code, and it is chapter 17.68, if you go to 010, it says "purpose." There are three different choices under here for a call-for-review. The commissioners can review, the council can review, and then other, the filing for an appeal. So that pretty clearly says to me, I mean, common sense says, if there's a council review, that means it's called up for us to look at. As council members, we oversee the planning commission, they do a lot of the work, and they make the essential decision, but if there's something that we think is going to put the city at risk, it's our job, and in our best interest, to make sure that we review these before we move forward. So I would just say, before we move forward with anything, we need to look at that, it's simple enough to me that it says "council review," the council review of a decision rendered by the director or commissions. I mean, how hard is that?
So Jerry, just as a courtesy, would you like to get a response from the city attorney to start the dialogue on this issue?
No, I've heard her respond. No, I've heard her response, and I've had...
But I don't know if everybody else has.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I don't need to hear it, but maybe you guys do.
And does anybody, I guess I'm interested just for the public's purpose, if you could just kind of respond to that.
Well, I think Stephen explained it when he gave the staff report, which is that, yes, staff is acknowledging and agreeing with council member Mejia that there is a reference there to council review, but there's no procedure in the code for council review. And the only procedure that's set forth is sort of what I would call an old-style procedure that says you have to state the grounds for disagreement. You have to state what portion of the decision you disagree with. And the case law makes clear that if you do that, you disqualify yourself. So you have kind of a conflict, and there are two ways to interpret it. One way is that, yes, you can call it for review, but you have to state what your disagreement is, in which case case law says we can't implement that procedure. The other interpretation is to say it provides for a call for review, but it doesn't give you a process, and you all need to tell us what that process is. So it's just an ambiguous, kind of, the code conflicts somewhat with the case law and with due process requirements. So you need to tell us until we can get a call for review ordinance put in place that cleans this up.
So just a clarification, so in path one, you say that if we go with a call for review, Jerry's going to be the one that actually says, look, I got a specific issue. She disqualifies herself out, so does that work its way to the rest of the council?
If you want to move forward...
Sandy, I don't mean to interrupt you. This is nonsense to me, because a call for review clearly states that if you're going to review it, it has to come before the council. Three of us or more cannot meet and come to a decision. So the most logical course for this would be for it to be agendized for us to be able to discuss it. Okay? So I understand what you're saying, where there would be conflicted out if I state that there's a concern and what the specific concern is. That doesn't mean, first of all, it doesn't make any sense, because that's our job, that's what we're supposed to do. And I see where you're saying there's a conflict. But to me, it's pretty simple. You say that there's an issue that you want the council to address as a whole, and you call for the review. That's what I've asked for. I haven't asked for an appeal, though several times in the emails between you and Angie, there seemed to be this reference to an appeal. I'm just asking if the council is on board with a call for review for this item. That's all.
Go ahead, Sandy.
If you want to move forward in that direction, when I say you, I mean the council's body, if you want to move forward in that direction, then the only lawful process, the only due process compliant process would be for you not to discuss the merits of this particular decision, but just to discuss what the issue is that's of concern, and agree to interpret the code as allowing the council to do that. I agree with you, Jerry, that this code is nonsense, the way it's written, it needs to be fixed. We're trying to make the best of it here. So you could interpret it as allowing for a discussion of whether this decision raises issues of significant importance to warrant council review, not whether the decision was correct or incorrect, but just whether it is of sufficient importance that the council should consider it, and then you would schedule the hearing on that appeal, if you wanted to go that route.
Okay. Jerry, do you want to kind of keep going on that, or do you want to get feedback by each council member?
No, that's what I'm asking, does the council, I mean, you and I have talked about it, unfortunately for both of us, at great length over our vacation time, but I just think that this call for review for the city council, or the council review as the code states, is something we need to do.
It's option two on the staff report, just so you're cracking.
Okay. So, and the only item that I would say that I have a concern with coming out on that is, again, it's the timing impact potentially of the project to go through another meeting, another hearing, and then kind of have, so, again, help me understand, and maybe I'm filling time as everybody else is getting ready to ask this question, but getting into the merits of the issue specifically, not the decision, I get it. You know, I guess at that point, if we decide the issue isn't big enough or significant enough or of important sense, then we would stop there and move forward so we can get into it and reverse course and say, okay, look, there's not enough here, let's go the other way.
Right. The first step in that process is for council member Mejia to identify what the issue is that she thinks is of sufficient importance so that the rest of the council can decide if they agree with that or not.
So that's what's on the table, is whether we're going to let Jerry procedurally go down that path. So I need to hear from the rest of you. Who would like to go next?
Well, I will.
Go ahead.
I understand that this is very ambiguous. It was difficult, I read it about four times, and then changed my mind after I heard Stephen this evening. But without a specific code that is entitled call for review, and we did have that on the agenda at one time, and it was tabled, unfortunately, as we are here this evening. I can't support going forward with this. First of all, I don't know what the issue is, but I think that we need to be mindful that the applicant went through the planning commission process and were given a conditional use permit. And I think it's just bad business for us to hold this up for another meeting, even if it were a special meeting. I think that we do need to address the issue, call for review, but not specifically for this case. I think we need to do it in, as you said, the macro for, if something like this comes up in the future, so that we don't have to go through this. That I think we need to do. And evidently, this has something to do with the conversion of carports, so maybe we need to look at that also. But I think for this specific project, we're on the tail end of this, and I just think it's improper to hold this project up.
Mayor, if I can, just really quickly to address that issue?
Please.
I have several emails that have gone back and forth between the city manager and myself, starting on, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to use the second set of glasses, because the lights are bad in here. The first one was on July 23rd, second paragraph. "I would like to formally request that we agendize for the next council meeting a discussion item on whether or not to appeal the decision made by the planning commission regarding the code enforcement portion of the CUP for 11111 Lexington. If a special meeting is necessary, please consider this my formal request for that meeting," and it goes on to address other issues. "There is no less than five times that I have requested this item, and I have also requested the special meeting. And what is frustrating to me as a council member is I have been stonewalled every step of the way. Sir, I feel very bad for you, and in my emails, it says, please let's address this quickly as to not negatively affect the applicant." That has been first and foremost. It's mentioned in here three to four times in several different emails. So Marilyn, while I respect what you're saying, I think that, once again, I'm being stonewalled even at this process. Troy, you and I talked about it, and you said you supported this for me, and it's not to damage you or to slow your project down. There's issues that I can't discuss until we decide for their call for review, and I would just respectfully ask that the council give me that option. I have, and several times, requested this meeting or a special meeting to be respectful of their timeline.
Sir?
I just, you know, have listened through the procedural aspects of this whole discussion, and to me, it seems that any decision made tonight regarding the garage doors would not be an ongoing decision that affected any other projects in the city, specifically for our project. So I'm only hoping that unless it's some giant disagreement with the color of the garage doors, or whatever the aspect of your appeal is, and that shouldn't stop us. If it's a procedural issue on how this is going to go forward in the future, allow this project to move on and then address these issues in your municipal codes, as it should be done.
Yeah, if it makes you feel better, that's not it at all. It's something much deeper than that. And that's why I would like, if you wouldn't mind supporting me, we can move this along tonight, to just make sure that we are looking out for the best interest of everyone here.
Well, I don't know what it is I'm supporting or disagreeing with.
So if you support the review, then that will give me the option to tell you what my concerns are.
Well, I mean, that sounds like a procedural, and I can't agree to that on the owner's behalf. I just, I'm going to be here listening to what is going to be the end result, and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Ken or Warren?
I'll go. You know, I'm concerned about this for, again, probably every reason that everybody else has brought up. I'm concerned that the ordinance really doesn't clearly identify what the procedure is or the authorities that we would have. So if anything, I would be in favor of a call for review ordinance, with the question, how long ago was this brought up to the city council? Do you recall?
Yeah, it's about a year and a half ago.
Okay. It's something that has to be brought up again, otherwise we'll continue to have issues like this. And I'm really not too much in favor of appealing something that the planning commission had already vetted out completely, and I don't completely understand, because, again, we don't know where we're going on this. And so it's an uncomfortable thing for, I think, all of us up here. But as far as I'm concerned, the only thing that I see is, I want to be able to get that ordinance updated, and so we never run into this kind of a situation again.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ken. Warren?
I do favor the, I guess, more formalized call for review. I do look at the city municipal code, and it seems to be fairly straightforward. It comes to this body for review, but if there's a procedural issue, I do, you know, agree it needs to be straightened out. Onto the specific issue of the CUP, I do have a concern myself with one of the aspects of it, but, of course, I'm not going to say anything until we can figure out how we're going to discuss this as a body, so that's all my comments.
Okay. So next step would be then to, I think we're going to have to take a vote and find out if we have support to be able to do this. Any other comments? Anybody have anything else that they want to add to the city staff at this point, before I kind of frame up what we're going to vote on? Eric, if you want to come up and address? I don't have any issue, or yourself, if you guys want to make comments, we're trying to do something here to help this process along.
Okay, deja vu, four years ago. This month or next month, four years ago, Mr. Edgar filed an appeal on Mr. Parker's landlord's request for signage through the planning commission, which they had approved. He sat in that chair while Mr. Parker let the dais. Mr. Siskel waived the $1,000 fee. Sound like what is being asked for right now by council member Mejia, that the council have an opportunity to consider an item that is before the planning, that the planning commission approved, because there are questions. This is not any different than four years ago, Ken Parker and the sign on this building. And the only difference was that according to code, which was just read to me, you shouldn't have actually been sitting up there since you filed the appeal. You should have had to have recused yourself, because you had already biased yourself, and no one mentioned it. I think that what we're doing now with council member Mejia is she's trying not to bias herself, so that she can participate in the discussion, just like you did four years ago. So I think that we've already been through this four years ago, when it dealt with Ken Parker's landlord putting the sign on the building, that the city council asked questions, had opportunities to discuss it, and then had an opportunity to vote on it. And I don't think that what council member Mejia is asking for right now is any different. It's just that, four years ago, no one tried to crush it by twisting the law all around. Most of us who were here remember it. You know, I think it's important that this be done quickly, just like it was important that, in spite of the fact that the appeal didn't have a date stamp and everything else, we all felt it should be heard. If you're going to hear it, hear it. If this should be heard, then let's hear it. Let's discuss it, let's bring it up, let's do a special meeting, whatever's necessary, so that he doesn't have to wait any longer than Ken Parker's landlord had to wait. But I think that the review process has already been done four years ago, this month or next month, and we should have no problem doing it now. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mayor and members of the city council, Art DeBolt. Before I lose my train of thought on that, I think the city attorney made a, she made a statement, I think it's, I think the import of it slipped by. I think that you can raise a concern without necessarily indicating a bias that would disqualify yourself. You review, you sit here and listen to different issues brought before you every day, or in every meeting, and you have a packet and you review it, and you're human, you're going to formulate some opinions as you're reading it, but you wait until you hear the balance of the applicants and the people coming forward, and then you make your decisions, and a lot of times, your decision is not, you know, the opinion that you had initially changes. So you can, I think you can bring forth a concern. It sounds like there's a concern being raised, or that has been raised. I don't know that it rises to the level of a bias, but once it's vetted amongst you, which you are the authority, you're the final authority on everything the commission does, then I don't think you're, I don't think you disqualify yourself by simply raising the concern, whatever it is, before you. With respect to four years ago or whatever, I know, when I was on the council, I think I appealed at least two or three planning commission decisions myself. At that time, a council, any council member could appeal a decision. We just announced it. We saw this decision, next meeting, I wished to appeal it, period, that was it. The next meeting, it was on the agenda, and the council member could participate. I participated in every one of them. In fact, in one of them, I appealed it, because I did disagree with the planning commission's decision, and then I voted against it when, I voted against my own appeal. I mean, it was, I was swayed the other way, and was in the minority on that. And so unless the case law's changed from 2002, in the timeframe that when Mayor Edgar was up there, I don't know if it's been case law in the last four years, has changed it, there's a history here of the council members participating. I would think you could raise the concern without saying that you're biased. That, that's my point to that. I would just say also, the various alternatives that are being presented, I just quite, I read the code, I don't understand the complexity of what's being presented here. It says there will be a council review. It goes further into section E of 2020, I believe, it says that following a vote to appeal, and after the council has voted to appeal, the only way you can vote to appeal is to discuss the issue. The only way you can discuss the issue is to have that issue or that request agendized, which I take is what council member Mejia has been trying to do, from the day after, whenever the CUP was heard. So that we have a time problem, I say that, with all due respect, the time has been squandered by the staff and whatever, by, you can call it stonewalling or just whatever, if they just couldn't read the code and come to grips with it, it would seem to me that they should have had this meeting days, literally days after the CUP, and raise the concern, discuss the concern, okay, guys, does this concern rise to the level that we feel we should appeal that decision and address that concern, either ratifying it or taking it away. I fail to see the, you know, the dilemma here, I really do. I mean, and if it's that fine of a line, the city attorney, I think there has to be some latitude, I think, I know, even you can find the latitude, I know that.
City attorney.
I agree with a lot of what Mr. DeBolt just said, in that, first of all, yes, that the procedure he describes, where a council member could just appeal a matter, was the procedure in many cities for a very long period of time. The line of cases that declared that to be a violation of due process does... The line of cases that declared that to be a violation of due process does actually predate 2002. Why it wasn't discussed in 2002, I couldn't tell you because I wasn't here. It didn't necessarily get widespread reading or understanding for a number of years. And so in the last decade, though, most cities have adopted call for review procedures to avoid just this issue. Because their codes, some of them even more clearly than this one does, said a council member may call it for appeal, and all they have to do is A, B, and C. And one of the things on the list was just what you have in your code, identify the portion of the decision with which the appellant disagrees. That's the provision that the courts have said violates due process. So it's not a matter of just whether your municipal code says you can do it. It's a matter of whether what your municipal code says you can do is sanctioned by the courts and is constitutionally proper. The fact that your code is ambiguous actually gives you an advantage here. Had it been very explicit that what you have to do is identify the portion of the decision with which you disagree, then you wouldn't have the latitude that you do have tonight of adopting a different interpretation. Because it's not clear what that review is, whether it's an appeal under this code section or whether it's some other process that isn't described here, I am trying to find that different route that lets you get to the ability to call something for review if it's of sufficient importance. As a non-legal comment here, I really think the next step ought to be for Councilmember Mejia to identify what the issue is. Because you can absolutely have an issue or a concern without bias. You identify what the issue is that concerns you without saying, I disagree with the decision. You're just saying, I want to look at that decision more closely. And that's the nature of a call for review. And just to respond to one other comment, all of the emails that I received were asking for the City Council to appeal, not to call for review. And that was why I wanted to have a discussion with you, Councilmember Mejia, and the city manager and I both tried to set that up so that we could have a discussion and figure out what the next step should be. But...
Well, if you'd like to review the emails I have here, they call for a discussion of the council, not for an appeal, though it was...
It says, "A discussion..."
For review.
For the council to vote whether to appeal.
It says, "For review." I have them here. You're welcome to look them over. But if you would like...
I have one here, too. So we must be looking at different emails.
Which one are you making reference to?
Okay, there's several. Hold on, guys. So let me do this. I think that we've got a different, you know, a perspective on this. Let's talk about this a little bit more. We've got the legal view. We've got some community input. We've got Jerry's perspective. The issue here is a council member has an item that she wants to bring forward and she wants to talk about in an unbiased way, to hear it. You know, if we say, yes, we want to hear that, we'll hear it. If we decide that there's something there, then we would have to schedule a meeting. If we decide there's nothing there, then we go back to, we gave Councilmember Mejia the courtesy to hear what her issue is, and at that point, you know, we go back to what I do think that we have unanimous support for up here, which is to be able to move forward, and it'll probably be for a future council meeting to do the call for review ordinance update. So I'm going to go one more time before, I hope that I don't have to go to a specific vote, but if I need to, I will. Is there support for just hearing what the issue is before we go forward?
I'd like to hear what the issue is.
Yeah, I would support that, too. Warren?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're going to move to the next step. Jerry, why don't you go ahead and talk about what your issue is specifically?
Okay, and I'd like to thank you, City Attorney and Council and Mayor, for giving me the opportunity.
Sure.
I'm only concerned about the issue that deals with code enforcement, being allowed to at any time enter the garages to verify that they're being used for what the Planning Commission deemed they should be used for. I've talked to a legal attorney with regards to real estate law today. He says he has absolutely never heard of this being done, that in HOAs, they have that opportunity, and that the benefit is, is that the person who is being addressed or having to sign the legal document can opt out. In this case, the city cannot allow you to do that. It also is discriminatory because your building is the only one that is being asked to do this. So we put the city at legal risk, and that is my biggest concern. It has nothing to do with what you want to do to the property. I think it's great. I wouldn't want to slow you down. And I hope you, if you'd like to, you can see the emails on several different occasions, starting back on the 23rd, where I said, let's move this along. We had a special meeting on the 6th of August where I asked to have it included. It was not included.
Okay. Go ahead if you want. You know, something, though, that'd be very helpful for me. So you called me and said, hey, I'm interested in doing this.
Right.
This all stems from a public hearing from the Planning Commission on July 9, 2012. This information is available for all of us up here, and I think it was also available online. There was a specific section in here that you're talking about. So the issue was passed, a conditional use permit was provided, is approved, you know, and I'm going to interpret what I thought it was. It just said that, you know, we don't want you to convert the carports into a storage facility. We want you to do carports, but just be aware that you're going to be subject to potentially us kind of keeping an eye on that you're not going to make these storage facilities. And I think, Jerry, that's where I think it got to you, but I couldn't find it specifically in this report. And so help me so I understand specifically what the problem is here.
It says on the conditional use, let me see if I highlighted it.
It's number 28. Code enforcement shall be authorized to inspect garages at any time to ensure there is sufficient room to park cars in garages. Is that a violation of the Fourth Amendment?
Yes. And that's one of the things I checked with the attorney, and he absolutely said that this would be a violation of the Fourth Amendment. And I'm also looking out for you, sir, because you cannot give away the rights of the residents because once they rent from you, you no longer are in charge of that property. They are, if I understand correctly, from the real estate gentleman. So, and he is a lawyer. This is what he does. He's very accomplished. So that was my concern, is are we putting ourselves in a position to have legal issues for the city for the illegal search of a property? Because this talks nothing about a noticing time generally, like if a landlord wants to come into your apartment to verify something or such, they have to give you 24 hours' notice. There's no mention of that. When I mentioned that to the lawyer, he said the same thing.
I understood in the city code that there was currently a provision where they would give the property owner a notice of code enforcement violations. At that point, an appointment would be scheduled for the inspection, and from then on, the tenant would be given notice, and that would be written into the lease. And currently, the property owner's insurance company would not allow for that type of storage in a garage for fire hazards and other...
Sure. I'm not opposed to you doing that with your tenants. I'm opposed to the city stepping in because I think it's an inappropriate action for us to be taking. So if you want to say to your tenants when they sign the lease, okay, these are only to be used for carports, that is your purview to do. It is not our position to be able to say, we're going to come in and check whenever we want. And how would we know that there would be a code enforcement problem unless we came in to check? Then I talked to Mr. Mendoza, and he said, the only way we would do that is if we had a warrant. Really, people? Are we thinking about getting a warrant for people putting storage in their garage?
Well, let's strike that provision from the conditions of approval and just let us go forward with the improvement of property.
That's exactly my point, sir, and that, I support you 100% on that.
Yeah, but the implication there, you realize that what you're just talking about means it goes back to a meeting. We can't strike this from here. It has to go back, be noticed. All interested parties have to come, and your project's delayed.
Well, it sounds like we're delayed. I mean, is there...
No, it doesn't sound like you're delayed. I think we're just trying to set the table. That's why I just want to make sure before you get, you know, too comfortable with that. I think that what I'd like to have is interpretation legally, because there's a couple assertions that have to do with what our city ordinance are for being able to use code enforcement as a tool to be able to enforce code within our city. I'd like some clarification on that, City Attorney, or Stephen, in one of you two.
I'd be happy to answer that. And then I have a suggestion, if I might, of how we might deal with this. So you're absolutely right that this condition in the CUP cannot trump, for example, a renter's right to privacy or their Fourth Amendment rights, and we still, as a city, have to act within the constitutional protections that are afforded to them. What this does confirm is that, for example, we could go onto the property, not into the garage, but we can go onto the property and look around, and if, say, as I've seen in some homes, the garage door that allows a vehicle to go in has been walled up, and now there's just a pedestrian door, and there's no longer a door for a vehicle, then we probably could get...
Sure.
...a warrant or issue an administrative citation and pursue code enforcement because we can tell that there's a problem there. So what you're really talking about is a policy about code enforcement of conditions and requirements generally, and of course, we're going to respect people's constitutional rights and their rights of privacy, and this doesn't trump that. My suggestion is that rather than appeal this, that we let, perhaps let the project go forward, because I haven't heard anyone have a concern about the substance of the project, have staff come back to you with their administrative policy about how these types of conditions are enforced and what are, kind of an explanation of what our code enforcement process is. And you can review that, give input, and maybe formally adopt it. If that results in a need to tweak this condition, then that could be done by the property owner requesting an administrative amendment because it would be a minor change to his CUP conditions, and that Stephen could just do that consistent with the policy that you approve. So you could give us policy direction. The property owner could go forward with their project, and we could kind of bring the CUP in line with whatever that policy is once we get your direction. Does that help?
I think it's helpful. Go ahead, Jerry.
My concern is, I talked, when I talked with the attorney, they talked about the police powers, where if there's a garage that's been converted into a living space, then absolutely we can go and we can, you know, say that this is an issue that needs to be addressed because it's not permitted. Okay? He asked me, what's the rationale for the action? What's the reason that you are allowing code enforcement to go on the property? And I said, merely to verify that a car is parked in there. He said, he's never heard precedents regarding this, and that there has been discussions regarding the same type of issue for HOAs at nauseam at the Supreme Court, which you probably have a lot more understanding. I'm not comfortable moving forward with this because, to me, this is an infringement on the rights of the people. The Fourth Amendment was what we were talking about earlier, and I'm really uncomfortable with it. I never meant to cause you the grief that you've experienced nor to slow your project or cost you extra money. I've made every attempt to move this along, and I think that it would be, it would be in bad taste and not in the protection of the rights of the people if we move forward with this. Sandy, what would be the noticing time for the, if we wanted to do a special meeting? Just for the public. I know what it is, but, so the gentleman sitting out there with the project would know.
It's 24 hours to get a special meeting under the Brown Act. The issue of how much notice has to be given for a call for review is one of those issues that's not in your code. We have provisions about how much notice needs to be given for an appeal, but we don't have provisions about how much notice for a call for review.
So then we have the latitude.
Stephen, do you remember the notice for an appeal?
Yeah, the notice is the same procedure that they went through when the original commission approved it. So it would be a 10-day, but mind you, in our city, we don't have a newspaper that publishes every day. So we usually have to do it two weeks in advance to meet that 10-day requirement, because it's only published on Wednesdays.
So we have to publish it in the newspaper? I thought it just had to be three places. We do it at the museum. We've done it at the newspaper, but I believe that there are other options for noticing, aren't there? Here at the City Hall...
There's, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about the requirements for posting an agenda, and Stephen's talking about the requirements for noticing an appeal. So you don't have explicit provisions for how to notice a call for review, but kind of the logical or simplest interpretation would be to use the same procedures that we use for an appeal, which is the 10-day notice.
Sir, go ahead.
I'm sure that the owner would agree to however you resolve the question of whether you can, through code enforcement or other legal avenues, inspect the garage for compliance of automobile parking. What he's really looking to do is try to get this property improved, try to get all of these construction issues taken care of so that he can rent the property. And however you administer the way that this code is going to be interpreted is just fine with him. So what we're really looking for, some resolution this evening, if possible, and then how it's administered in the future will be totally up to you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. I definitely got comments, but I don't, anybody else? Go ahead, Marilyn.
I feel that Sandy has given us a way for us to take care of this without causing any more delay for the property owner and this project to go forward. I think we would all agree that most often for code enforcement, code enforcement is done not proactively but reactively. It's where somebody complains about something, and then they complain to the city, and then code enforcement gets involved. I'm not in favor of us doing anything where anyone at random can serve a warrant and say, let's go. I don't think any of us want that. And, you know...
But that's what's permissible in this. That's the problem. No? Then Stephen's wrong with what he told me, then.
I think I have the floor. I would, I would be happy to have us move forward on the recommendation that Sandy has made because I think that this project needs to go forward. It has nothing to do with how they're going to do the project or anything, and I think that we can find a resolution to this. And I do not want to hold this man's project up. I want him to be able to leave here this evening and tell the owner or the people that he's representing that they can move forward.
Okay.
So however we have to do, whatever we have to do to accomplish that, I think that we need to do. I'm in favor of us moving forward for having a code clarification where we have a call for review so we don't have to deal with this kind of thing in the future.
Okay. I'm also supportive of that. I think that we've been able to give a, an option that, you know, we've listened to Councilmember Mejia. We've been able to get the owner to be able to start tomorrow to get this project moving forward. We have a way to cure the problem down the road and kind of administratively catch up and get it fixed if there truly is a problem there. So I would be supportive of that. And again, any other comments?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mejia. So, City Attorney, I think you said something on this Item 28, this code enforcement shall be authorized. And I think you said that as a normal course of business, such as someone who boards up their garage, puts a solid wall and a cutout mandor that they can cross through, is something that's, of course, not to code. Yet we don't put that in CUPs when someone wants to do renovation, that you can't board it up, you can't put a mandor in there, and you have to use it for its intended purpose, right? We don't put that in there typically. We have, that's why we have codes and we have code enforcements. They're just kind of written and not into the CUP. So I think the question is valid on this one. It's written in the CUP, and I am uneasy with this, where it says that we will violate your Fourth Amendment by going in there unreasonable search and seizure. What if we went to go look for a car and there happens to be an opium farm or something in there? Then what? I mean, did we just now blown something that, you know, we can come back and get sued, and then DEA is now not able to go and do their... and then DEA is now not able to go and do their job because we've just done something we shouldn't have done? All, and we're enforcing the code.
The, there are multiple steps in there. When, when there are
I'm sorry to interrupt, so, but we say multiple steps, so, so let's take it that there's a property that doesn't have this CUP on it, so it's kind of the same answer, right? One has it, one doesn't, they're side by side, and so can you answer it saying, what's the procedure for code enforcement on, on both, in the same situation?
The, effectively, Condition 28 is a waiver by the, the property owner, okay? But it doesn't extend to tenants unless the tenants have also agreed to it, okay? So we can't enforce it beyond the scope of the constitutional waiver, okay? If you have two different properties, one that requires a discretionary approval and one that doesn't, the one with the discretionary approval is going to have additional conditions on it that the one that didn't require discretionary approval won't have. That's just the nature of conditional approvals. That's why it's called the conditional use permit, because it has conditions on it. And whether you want to be able to have this kind of condition in your CUPs is a policy decision that I'm suggesting you make as a council. And you may decide that you're not comfortable with this, or you may decide you are comfortable with this, but I'm suggesting you can make that as a policy decision, and then this particular owner can come back and conform his CUP to whatever policy decision you made. We could do that administratively, and it wouldn't hold up his project, because it doesn't affect anything he needs to do right now. And either the condition will stay here, because you decide as a policy that you're comfortable with these kinds of conditions, or it will come out later because you decide that that's not the city's policy. It doesn't change the basic requirement that the garage is supposed to be used for parking, it's just a detail of enforcement, which is an administrative matter and, and not of significant, I'm trying to remember the term, Stephen, of what, the scope of your administrative power to amend a CUP.
Well, it's actually listed in Condition 5. It shows that if he were to write a letter asking for a modification of this CUP, the director has some authority below the Planning Commission to amend it. We place that condition in many of the CUPs. You'll see it in Condition, I said 5, I hope it's 5. Halfway through, Condition number 5. And I'll begin to read it.
I'm not seeing it in Condition 5, but
One, two, three, 3, I'm sorry. No, that's indemnification, it is number 2. If any changes are proposed regarding the structure, the structure, request for amendment of this approval must be submitted to the Director of the Community Development Department. If the Director determines that the proposed changes are consistent with provision spirit and intent of this approved action, and that such action would have been the same with the proposed changes for the proposal approved herein, the amendment may be approved by the Director of Community Development. And I don't think after hearing tonight, there'd be any question whether there was support for the Director to render that decision.
What's, what's altered on the structure?
No, it says the, of, the amendment of this approval.
If any, if any changes are proposed regarding the structure
Sure. Comma, a request for this amendment of this approval must be submitted.
So, so by not parking a car in there, what's altered in the structure?
Well, not really, the building's not structured, the approval is being requested to change. The, the action that the Planning Commission made.
So, so, okay, so your, your authority is beyond the structure, the, the 2x4s, the loads and all that kind of stuff?
The building permit is under my purview as well.
Okay.
Because that's what this indeed does. It leaves
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
Code enforcement is under staff's discretion as well.
City Attorney, you basically said the, this, the way this is written, this 28, this Item Number 28, is a waiver that, a right that the applicant has given up that says, you can inspect me anytime for whatever suspicion that I have boxes in there instead of a car, or I turned into a dog kenneler instead of a car. And then they have to, in turn, put that down to their tenants. And if they should sell the building and have new owners, the new owners will have to be cognizant of this and make sure, because we go in there with the assumption that there's a waiver, we could be opening up ourselves to illegal search and seizure, right? If, if the waivers aren't all in place.
Anytime we engage in code enforcement, if we do it in a way that violates someone's constitutional rights, we're at risk.
Okay.
Absolutely. And this could be done in that way, and so could lots of other code enforcement.
Sure, understand, but, but again, the, the risk is that if someone forgets to get that waiver into a lease agreement that is placed with a tenant, and we go in there, then we're, we're opening ourselves to some liability litigation. I think that's what Councilmember Graham, his point is, when I read that, that is my, certainly my kind of worry about this thing, the way it's written.
May I find me one additional thing?
Sure. Are you done, Warren?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Well, in addition to that, as I was saying earlier, there's no option for the renter to opt out, as there is in an HOA when somebody potentially owns. So, sir, if you don't mind, are you gonna, are you gonna afford the renters the option to opt out of this? And, and that's not legal for them to do anyways, because it's a code, correct, Stephen?
Well, if I could offer a suggestion, the property owner can apply for a modification of the approval for the director, asking to remove that condition, I remove the condition, the issue's mute.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but let's keep it in perspective, is, you know, because I think what we're talking about, and, and it seems like we're there, it's just we're still talking past each other. We approve the project tonight, it moves forward, that process continues to go in parallel. If there's administrative change required, the owner's notified, and you have the authority to approve it once he goes for the amendment, seems like we're there. So, Jerry, are you, are you okay with that process?
Well, it sounds like Stephen's saying he can change it without us going through the process, and then all we have to do is address the council review and come up with a process for that. And then if we need to address this going forward with future buildings, then we're set. So, I mean, if that's, I'm willing to make that compromise, because I want to support what, what we're doing tonight, I really do, but I can't do it if we're going to jeopardize or forfeit the rights of the residents. I'm not comfortable with that, I'm just not.
No, I, I hear you. So let me try and frame this up one more time. And Sandy, I'm going to ask you to kind of help me, because I think we need to get clarification on the motion. We said that we would go ahead and, for this evening, approve or confirm the CUP that's been awarded to the applicant, as, as is. We would second, we would have staff start to move forward on an evaluation.
Let me stop you already. Sorry. You're not going to affirm the Planning Commission decision, you're just going to decline to review.
Okay.
Okay? Affirming it means you're making a decision on the merits, declining to review means you're just electing not to review it, and then the Planning Commission decision would stand.
Okay, got it.
Want me to list the other things that I heard tonight? Would that be easier?
The shot of going through and being
Okay. That you would decline to review it, you would agendize for future discussion the policy regarding enforcement of, of the use of garages. You would agendize for a future meeting, a call for review ordinance, or consideration of a call for review ordinance. And then, separate from the motion but understood, is that once the policy is sorted out, if it requires a clarification to this CUP, that, that'll be done administratively. We understand that.
So the Fourth Amendment issue gets handled when they go back through the use of garages process, right?
Right.
That's not what I understood. I thought Stephen had the power to address it immediately. Is that not right, Stephen?
As soon as he writes me a letter, I'll be able to process it.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think there's the motion. Would somebody like to make it?
I'll second.
I guess I just made it, so that is the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. I'm glad we could work together to get through that. Thank you, sir, for your time tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
And good luck to you with your project. Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. I've had two requests up here, so it's 8:45, so we'll be back at 8:55.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back into order. We left off on Item 11A. Item 11A, an item requested by a council member regarding confidential closed-session materials for the trash lawsuit. City manager.
I think this item is pretty self-explanatory, so if you would
What I'll do, that was weak, giving you a hard time, but Councilmember Kuzamoto had to add this. This was one item in a list of three that was on a previous agenda item. Councilmember Kuzamoto, I'll give you the floor.
Well, I think, as City Manager said, it is pretty self-explanatory. Just look to, to us to create a record that we have in our red binder that will be usable by us and by future councils.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments?
If I could ask for a point of clarification, a couple of months ago, there was a reference made to some documentation being kept in the red binder, and at that time, I was saying, that's funny, I've never heard of that before. You said it's customary in other cities, and so I, I know that Councilmember Kuzamoto asked to see it and saw it. So I don't know why this wouldn't just be a good policy. I mean, it's, it's historical records regarding litigation that's only for closed session. It's not like anybody's going to take it out and use it inappropriately. It's just for a record for future councils.
It's completely a policy decision. Some cities do it, some cities don't. Whatever you all decide is fine with staff.
If I might, Mayor, one of the reasons that I, I agree with this is because I've just been going through tons and tons of agendas and emails and all of that, trying to sort it and file it and store it for prosperity's sake. And I think that I came across a document of a gentleman who has brought a potential legal action to the city on two separate occasions. I anticipate that this could come up in the future, and I think that there needs to be a historical record of what he brought forward. Troy, it's the property on that corner with the parking issue, Necro Summer, I believe is how you say his name, over on
Oh.
Patella. And, and there's the potential for that to be revisited, once the frustration, the gentleman's having a difficult time
The parking
Renting the property because of the parking permits. And so there are things that could reoccur, and if there's no past history of what the council addressed and what their decision was, then the new council, who maybe knows nothing about it, there's no history for them to go from. So I support this, and I do have that document, if we don't have a copy of it, to be able to be placed in that red binder. In addition to that, we, unfortunately for city attorneys, sometimes don't have the same city attorney, and so all that historical knowledge is lost. I just think that this is something that's essential for the protection of the city moving forward, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Marilyn?
Yes. As most of you know, I was first elected in 1994, and I served 12 years. I was off for two, and I, this is three and a half years now I'm in here. And when I, I read this, I'm going, what red binder? Never heard of it. I called Alice Jemse, she'd never heard of anything like it. I called a couple of other council, past council members, they had no knowledge of a red binder. And then I called the staff, and evidently, on the two years that I was off of the council, there was some questions of, of the clerk, and she put together some handouts or something like that. I'm not in favor of this. I don't think it's a policy, first of all, closed-session items are closed session. There's a reason that they're for closed session. And what takes place in closed session should stay there. We have always had a practice of if handouts were given to us, they were taken back before we left the room. And I believe they, my understanding was that they were always shredded. And I think it totally defeats the whole purpose of closed session. Closed session is for legal action, help me here, Sandy.
Legal action.
Personnel.
Personnel, decisions, real estate, so on, okay? And most of those, there's a decision that is made, that then is made out in open session, the results of what is done, and that is in the minutes. So that is there for the record, for anyone that wants to go through, through the minutes. I have minutes clear back for the whole time that I've been on the council. So I see no necessity in doing this. And part of the other thing here is to recreate, that, note, to recreate additional materials not handed out in closed session, and to be created and placed in the binder, I don't know how that would happen. I don't know how you could do that. I certainly don't remember what, every word that was said in any of the closed sessions that we've had. And all of the decisions, as I said, have been, have been, if there's been a decision, it has come out and been made in public. So I see absolutely no necessity for this.
Okay. Ken?
I'm trying to figure out how you, that was one of the questions I had. How do you go back through and create a binder on comments and everything that were made in closed session? It's almost like you're trying to reconstruct.
That's not one of the options that, that staff is presenting here. In terms of going back retrospectively, we're only looking at trying to locate handouts that may have been given out in closed session. I should clarify one thing, that when I said, we're okay with whatever policy you adopt, I just want to make clear that that does not mean that a council member or anyone could go in and just browse through the binder. Before someone could look at any given item in the binder, they'd have to be cleared for conflicts and all of that, so it's not something you could go browse through. It would be there as a record, but typically, when that kind of a record is maintained, it's only the city clerk
Right.
Who has access to it.
But even on something like the case of the handouts, you don't have the, I mean, a lot of times, things would be presented to us in closed session, as far as handouts go, but there was a great deal of conversation that went along with it, either in favor or not in favor of it. So even by putting handouts in there, my fear is that that would be something that might be misleading to future councils, as to any direction or the way we were thinking at the time on the decision-making process. So that part of it, that definitely concerns me, and, and goes even farther than that, any future council, you know, they're going to be going into it, trying again to see the mindset that we have. We don't take minutes in closed session, and so they won't know the verbiage that went along with any of these handouts. So I'm not sure it even has a good purpose going forward from this point. So I'm, I'm really not in favor of it either.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, again.
Sure, go ahead, Warren.
Thank you. So I guess none of you have looked at the red binder. I put my eyes on it, I perused it, I read it, I did not clear myself for conflict. I read them all. I read what's in there. And there was a case of, I think it was the ACLU suing the city. There was another case where, I think it was a personal injury, someone tripped on the sidewalk, and it had dragged out. So there's those type of things in there. And there was a nice summary from Dean Durleth that said, this is what happened on the ACLU lawsuit, this is the settlement, and I think it's all there and it's nice and tidy. So I would think that as a city, if we ever get sued again for something similar, we can go back and look at that, and we have a reference. I am not asking for verbatim, I am not asking for minutes, I'm not asking for handouts, because as we all know, there were virtually no handouts. All I'm asking for is a summary. The city attorney has copious amounts of documentation. If we can ask for an executive summary If we can ask for an executive summary, that would be on the order of 25 pages or less, that we would put in there. I think it then speaks to the future, that allows us to not do the same thing again. You know, back to you, Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Okay. So, there's two aspects to this, when I look at it. The first part is the policy. You know, I see a disconnect in the request. If you read the letter that was the request, this request for evaluating this is specific to the trash contract. So, I think staff has taken it and turned it into the staff report and tried to make it seem, kind of rise above it and say, "Hey, look, let's just look at it from a policy perspective." And, you know, even in the subject line here, we don't say "for the trash lawsuit," but that's exactly what this is about. You know, the policy, if you look at it and you just play out the scenarios, right, in closed session, personnel. "I have a problem. Two council members have a problem. Three council members have a problem. We want to talk to the city manager. We're going to go through a process." The outcome of that could be a performance plan. The outcome of that could be a change-out. I mean, this is all just given an example. It could be, "We love what you're doing, so we're going to modify your contract, give you a great raise." I mean, whatever the outcome of that process is, would be, the end result would be what the result is. The deliberation process that we go through to get there is a different story. You know, just a little bit of a history from my view is legal privilege, whether it's in closed session or it's privileged when we're going through a process. You know, I have seen legal privilege at a point, for an item that I was involved with, that was under legal privilege. You know, when it got to a point where it was convenient, the council lifted legal privilege, so that all of the information, whether it's emails, any documentation, could be brought to the public. And it wasn't brought out, you know, it was more brought out for politics, to either make a point, you know, highlight something, "Look, you did, you actually supported this thing. And even though we didn't get rid of a city manager or whatever, this is what your perspective was," whatever the issue was. But, you know, for me, I've seen this process be used for political purposes, not to be able to set better policy for the city. So, I'm by nature, you know, really trying to read into, "Why are we doing this?" You know, personnel appeals, I talked about that. Real estate, you know, if there's a deal that comes down, it comes down to a document that we're going to actually go and make a, you know, we get an opportunity next door and we're going to help put together some sort of land deal. Eventually, that would come and manifest itself into the land deal. Pending litigation is really what we're talking about here, or litigation in total. We have a trash contract that was under closed session. We have constantly been going back and forth on the closed-session part of it, from the Brown Act perspective, from the documentation, from the settlement, from the protest, on and on. You know, I see this item directly related to the last item we're going to talk about tonight on the agenda, which is the prosecution of the municipal code. And this is just saying, "Hey, look, I need some better records." So, you know, on the essence of the policy, do we need to have a way to formally say what our requirements are in closed session, to be able to document and store stuff into the magic red binder? That's one item. Whether we do it for the trash contract, I absolutely am over it. And I'm not, I would not continue to reinforce that we're going to go back and recreate history that will, in the future, as councils change, be brought back out into light. And we'll go round 15 on this thing one more time. Now, back to specifically the policy, you know, I would have to say that, you know, again, closed session is for working through the details of the problem, or the issue, or the opportunity. I don't see a benefit on trying to, you know, basically put information in, because I don't see the outcome. What, at the end of this, other than being able to go back and read it and go, "God, that's interesting." You know, the lawsuit that we had, LATV, $380,000 ACLU lawsuit. There, at the end, I don't know what was in that red binder, but there was a tremendous amount of claims filed by the ACLU, our responses. If you want to take the time to read it, it's out there. And so, any of these issues. So, again, I feel that this request is more to be able to gain information for political use versus policy. So, I wouldn't support this in either the policy aspect, or specifically having to do with the trash contract. With that, I would entertain what the council would like to do next.
Mayor, may I address a couple of things?
Absolutely.
Okay. Marilyn made a comment that the handouts have always been collected, once the closed session is over. That's not true. And it may be only Marilyn, because you were not here when Dean Derleth was here. I'm not saying you're being untruthful. I'm just saying, prior to the council meetings, we would receive a confidential red envelope with the documents for us to review, prior to coming to the council meeting. We could make notes on those, and we were allowed to keep them and put them in our files for our reference. So, it is not customary necessarily. That is just what Sandy chooses to do, is to collect that information back. I think, as a council member, that's something I should retain, because it deals with the decisions that we make that affect this community. And if, in four years, and I'm still on the council, I can't recall all the specifics, I can go back to my notes. Or, in this case, we could go back to the red binder, just for a refresher. Ken, you said it would be confusing to future councils. I don't think what Warren is asking for would be confusing. It's just a summary. This is, you know, this is what we're being sued for. These are the steps that we took. This is the counter. This is the outcome. And if, Troy, what you're saying is all that information is public records, then why would we have an opposition to doing it? Your comment about the trash lawsuit, I think the reason, and I can't speak for Warren, but if I was to surmise, the reason he may have initially asked for the trash lawsuit information to be included is because since Warren's come on the council, that's the only lawsuit that we've addressed, pending the, you know, UUT. So, since that's not completed, there's nothing that we can do to include that in. But you could ask him to speak on that further. You said it's policy. What were your two, your two points, Troy? Because I was trying to make notes. I know that you said one is a policy issue, that you thought that this was just merely for the lawsuit. And I can understand why you would be opposed to that. I get it. But I didn't get the second...
Second was the substance that this specific to the trash lawsuit.
Okay. For me, if the trash lawsuit is the hiccup here, I say, "Don't include it." I will tell you, it would have been beneficial if we had kept this kind of little running thing, because if you recall, I had conflicted out and then realized that I wasn't conflicted out, based on conflicting advice. And so, we asked to meet with Sandy. There was a whole problem with that, where you wanted to be in attendance at the meeting. And we would have had to notice that it was a special meeting, because it was supposed to be a meeting of Warren and I, with Sandy, to come up to speed with the items that we had missed in closed session. Because as a council member, we have to be informed about the issues that face the city that we vote on and that, you know, have a cause and effect on the community. If we had had this kind of like running tally, and I'm not saying we have to do it for the trash lawsuit, but I think as a policy moving forward, I think it's a good idea. I mean, as I said, we have the documentation for NecroSomer. I don't believe that that's in there. I can, I'm happy to surrender that for the historical value to the future councils. But as far as, as far as the council members being confused, or this being specific to the trash lawsuit, that's not my intent. I think it would have made it easier. We wouldn't have had to request to meet with Sandy. We could have just reviewed the document. It would have saved time. It would have saved battling between us, because what it did is it caused a huge rift amongst the council. And that's the things that we're trying to avoid. So, if you're, if you're comfortable moving forward with this, not including the trash lawsuit, I'm fine with that. I do think, though, that a historical record of the lawsuits is, it's important for us moving forward. So, I don't think, for me, the substance in supporting this, and I don't believe it is for Councilmember Kuzamoto, as I said, I think it's just the only lawsuit we've addressed. The substance is not to damage you in the future, or any council members. It's just to have a record. It's very simple. I think it's being read into far too much. So, that's all the comments I have.
Can I ask you, Jerry?
Sure.
Do you feel that you're not afforded by the municipal code to be able to request, while in closed session, direct the city attorney? At this point, we'd like to have this schedule or this issue documented. Could you put that in the red binder? We could have a vote on it in closed session and do it. Do you know that we have that opportunity?
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, when you're in the minority and you ask for something, those things aren't always afforded to you. And that's what happened to Warren and I, when we said, "We need to be brought up to speed on the, on the meetings that we missed with dealing with the trash lawsuit," because now we are both in. Warren had said, "I'm going to step away," but that was conceived, you know, to be a Brown Act violation. So, he said, "Okay, maybe I acted too hastily. I'm going to step back in." But there were meetings that he missed, and there was pertinent information that happened in those meetings. Myself, I stepped away in the very beginning of the trash lawsuit, so I know nothing that transpired. I think that puts me to detriment, because moving forward, I don't have that vital information. So, you can say that the policy or the code provides for it, but if you're in the minority, it doesn't make any difference what the code says, because you're not going to get it if the majority doesn't want you to have it. And that's not an accusation towards you. I'm just saying, it's the truth of politics. So, no, I don't agree with that. I think that this is something that is a safety net for those of us who don't have the votes on our side.
So, let me ask you just a clarification. So, you said three things. One, you're not talking about the trash lawsuit, so we're talking about a go-forward position. Is that correct?
Yep.
Two is, you know, we understand that we have the authority under the municipal code to direct items. Your concern is you may not have votes to actually move something all the way through into the red binder, or whatever that is. And the third thing is that going forward, are you prescribing a minimum level of documented information that has to come out of a closed session? Or are we saying just a general standard, as we're looking for schedules or briefs that are presented? Again, are we creating new things? Are we just saying, "Things brought in"? Your example you used was a good one. The red envelope gets sent to our house, so that we could be better prepared for the discussion. We bring the red envelope in, keep our kids from looking at it at home. And then, when we get here, no one really cares at home. But you get here. And then, after we're done, we usually hand that envelope back. You may keep yours. I don't know.
Well, in the past, they always do.
And so, what I'm trying to find out is, what is it that you're specifically recommending on option three, or position three, which is, what is the minimum level of documentation that you're really saying then, going forward?
Well, I think it's exactly what Warren said, which is a summary from the city attorney stating the important issues and the outcome. I mean, God forbid, Sandy moves on and she's no longer here. I mean, we've tried to request documents that are current, and we can't get them, because they don't exist beyond the time that the email times them out. So, to me, this is very important, because we have to do it in a timely manner. We have to do it when the lawsuit finishes up, or whatever you decide. Maybe it's personnel issues get included in there. I don't know. I'm just saying, in numerous times, Troy, you and I, starting in the very beginning, we've asked questions, and no one has any historical knowledge. So, we're kind of shooting from the hip, trying to guess what they did, or the reason that they did it. And that's just not good business. That's not what the people of this community deserve. They deserve to have informed council and staff, so that, as Warren said, or, I'm sorry, maybe you did, Troy, we have a point of reference, so we don't duplicate and make the same mistakes that we've made in the past. It's a really, I don't see any hidden agenda here. I really don't. And if the trash lawsuit is not something you want in there, for me, it doesn't have to be there.
So, city attorney, just a question. What is your method to decide? You know, what we're talking about is, you usually formulate a staff report that has legal privilege over the top. So, you must go through a process when you decide that you have to put something into a staff report, to send to us home before we come. You know, is there some sort of a criteria? Because if there is, it seems like we would be creating that document anyway, for items that would be documented in that form.
With respect to most closed-session items, not all, but most, if there are either a lot of numbers, something visual, or something complex, then we try and put it in writing. If, if the concepts are pretty basic, or it's just, you know, a discussion of something, then we don't necessarily put it in writing. And one of the reasons is that, no matter how hard everyone tries, occasionally, someone, someone turns out to know something they shouldn't know about closed session. And, and we've just found over the years, that it's not good to have too many documents floating around about what's going on in closed session. And if something is simple enough and straightforward enough to just have a conversation in closed session. And then, you document the results of that closed session, if there's something that either needs to be reported out, or that the council feels needs to be documented. When there are complex matters, and that does often happen, especially with litigation and personnel negotiations and things like that, we create a document. I'm not sure what your impression was, Jerry. I never require that it be handed back, but I certainly do accept them being handed back. And most cities that I've worked with, the council members prefer to hand them back, because they don't want the responsibility of having that confidential information, should there ever be a leak, or that kind of thing. So, we can do minutes of closed sessions, where you just report on actions that are taken in closed session. They're not as detailed normally as what you do for open session, but you can do minutes just showing who was in attendance and what actions were taken, if any. You can keep track of records. You can do it on a meeting-by-meeting basis. If there's something you think needs to be kept for the record, then you can direct us to do that. There are lots of ways to deal with this. It's really up to you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Sandy, I didn't mean to infer that you made us, but that was, if I'm allowed to say, that was what the discussion was, is no, they wanted, they were to be handed back in after we were done with them in closed session. I've, I've said on several occasions, I would at least like to receive the handouts prior to council meetings, so that you can review them. Some of us are speedy readers, and some of us are not. The legal terminology sometimes can get very cumbersome when you're trying to read it, at least for myself. So, I think that my concern is that I feel like I'm being denied both access to it before, so I can peruse it, I can formulate questions, as opposed to being asked to vote on it right at the time I'm trying to read it, as other people are speaking. It's just not, it's not conducive. So, I think that the perception is, is that somehow, one of us is going to talk to somebody outside the city council about the closed-session issues. But I will argue that in the two years that, I think it was two years, a couple of years that Dean Derleth was here, we got our packets ahead of time. And to my knowledge, and I don't know if you've had a different experience, Troy, there was never any discussion of closed-session items prior to, except for the one that I brought up at a couple of meetings ago. That had nothing to do with either you or I.
But, you know, something, Jerry, I would say that, you know, you and I have been into closed sessions before, where it's been pretty significant items. And some of that stuff, you know, we had to be just straight out and have hardcore discussions.
Sure.
You know, the outcome of that process was in the best interest of the city, but archiving the path to that outcome...
That's not what, I don't think that's what we're, I'm not looking for meeting minutes. I know you mentioned that. I just said, just a summary of, this was the item. These were the items that were addressed. Doesn't have to have anybody's name, you know. It's just to walk the future councils through the process, so they know that we thought. Because there are things that will reoccur in this city, much like maybe what we dealt with tonight. You know, if, if moving forward, we don't change the ordinance to say that, you know, you can't have your garage as a storage area, you might find that there are legal actions that are taken, should we go down that path, and they might occur multiple times. I think that just having a basic, I think there's too much being read into, a basic description of what happened and the final outcome. That's it. I mean, I don't think it was meant to be any more in-depth than that.
Okay. Any other comment?
Quick question.
Sure.
If we did have that kind of summary minutes, or listing of what the categories are, could that be challenged in the future for additional information?
Do you mean, well, it couldn't be challenged, hopefully, by a third party, because they wouldn't have access to it. It would be confidential information. There are some closed sessions, and I'm sorry, don't mean to make this complicated, but there are some closed sessions where I wouldn't necessarily want to see even that, like personnel matters. Personnel information should stay in the personnel file and be treated differently.
Sure.
But if you're talking about for litigation matters... But if you're talking about for litigation matters, then it would be the same kinds of discussions you've already been having about how much information you should have and when and who gets it and.
Yeah. Well, it was personnel. If something, say, went to court on a personnel matter, could additional information be required from the closed session or requested from the closed session? Since we already created the binder stating that this conversation took place, could they ask for more information? And again, it goes back to personnel litigation or possibly something like that.
It's a complicated question.
That's one.
And under most circumstances, no. Under some circumstances, yes. That's why I wouldn't recommend that you do this for personnel matters and put it in the red binder. Personnel matters should be handled.
Privately.
In the way that personnel matters are handled and documented, the way your personnel rules say they should be documented.
All right. My other concern too, and I think it was stated by Mayor Edgar, that closed session is for the working through of details before you're bringing something out to council. And I'm not quite sure if having that binder is going to assist in any way. So I'm sort of iffy on it. I'm leaning not to have the binder at all unless somebody could frame up something different.
Go ahead, Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I became aware of the red binder when it was noted in one of the meeting minutes after I'd asked a series of questions of the city manager. And this referenced back to the meeting that Councilmember Graham Mahia had said that we had arranged to meet with city attorney to try and catch up on the trash lawsuit. And there was a series of questions, which end up not happening and two of us meeting with the city attorney. So my questions were asked to hear and open, and I received a written response to my questions, and they immediately get put into the red binder. So I guess I don't understand why we would put something like that in the red binder and not put the rest of it. And I think as Councilmember Graham Mahia says, I'm not asking for who said what in what session. I'm not even asking for decisions because those are, of course, disclosed and open. They are announced when there's a reportable action. I'm asking, as in my memo to the city manager, something as simple as the case number, the decision, who met with who on the negotiation sessions. Those aren't clear. You know, Mayor, you had asked Councilmember Graham Mahia, you know, there would be, in closed session, we can ask for information. Well, you know, I'm going to say, I've asked for information, and it's been denied to me. I've asked several times, and it's denied. I don't get to understand some of the conversations you had with the city attorney, and I don't know why, but that happened. So, you know, it's something, it's fine that we can talk about in close, but with only two votes, I'll never get it. So, you know, let's just create the summary. It's high-level, executive summary, five pages, 10 pages, nothing more than that, not the gory details. This is it. We went through the whole process. We reached a settlement, and I think it's all there nice and tidy in a compact package that future councils can then go back and reference, much like the ACLU case against LATB3. Just something as simple as that. Go back and look, go in there and look at those, and that's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, I think at this point, yeah, I'm just going to put a motion out there that, you know, we just tabled this for now. I don't think we have enough information. There's criteria that need to be evaluated. You know, we're starting to say that we're looking at personnel appeals. Those are different than certain legal and real estate issues. I understand the essence of what we're trying to do here, but I also, I don't think I fully understand the magnitude of the slippery slope that we start causing through this. I've been a part of a lot of organizations regionally. I don't know any organizations myself that do take meeting minutes and publish them and have them available. And I'm not saying that that is the precedent we should follow. I just haven't seen that as a practice myself. So I would just make a motion that we continue this item or table this item for now.
I'll second it.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Let me, Marilyn first, then Jerry back to you.
Yes, I would like to make a substitute motion, and that would be to not to not have a red binder with material from closed session.
Okay.
But it already exists, so are you making a motion to remove the existing red binder that was brought up when Councilmember Kuzamoto asked his questions? I'm just not sure what the motion entails.
I think, well, my interpretation is that there is a binder that's out there. I don't think we're talking about destruction of current information. I think that we are not acknowledging the red binder as being a part of the policy going forward of capturing stuff in closed session.
So my motion would be that we would not continue the practice. I didn't know, well, it isn't a practice. I don't know, I'd like to know from the staff how much stuff has been put in that binder and why didn't we know about it.
I didn't know about it either. I found out about it a number of months ago. I think the, I asked the staff, you know, what is this? Where did it come from? What's the purpose of it? I was told that a number of years ago, former city clerk was asked some questions that she couldn't answer, and so she took it upon herself, or so I'm told, to start documenting, taking documents from closed session and putting them in a binder. The, I haven't really looked through the red binder myself, but I am told that it is inconsistent in its entirety, and that's what I know about it.
Okay, so it isn't a policy, then, of this council, to put things in the red binder? Has not been. It was something that a city clerk did on her own.
I am not aware of any policy.
Right. So we don't have a policy in place of placing anything, and I would not be in favor, and that's my motion, that we not create a policy that would be putting closed-session information into any binder.
Okay, great. So that's the motion on the floor. Jerry, are you going to address that motion or are you going in a different direction? Because I've got to see if there's a second for that.
Yeah. I would just like to add as a caveat to what she just said. Angie, you made my argument for me. The city clerk could not remember specifics, and the only way she could be accurate was to go to the red binder. So I would encourage you to think this through because there has been so much historical documentation or understanding of what has happened in the past loss. We're stumbling over ourselves doing things time and time again. So my motion is to go with the recommended action on a very limited amount of information just for a basic description for prior councils to be able to access. That is my motion.
Okay. So, city attorney, help me sort out.
I know.
We've got original motion, we've got a substitute motion, and a second substitute motion. I believe we hear the first substitute motion and see if I get a second.
First, you need to find out if you have a second to either motion.
Okay. So I'll make a second to Marilyn's substitute motion. And so at this point then?
You can either withdraw your original motion, or we can have a vote on whether to substitute.
Okay, I'll withdraw my prior motion.
Okay. Now you need to know if there's a second to Jerry's motion.
Okay.
I will second Jerry's motion.
Okay. So now we've got two substitute motions that have a second.
The, so as not to be confusing, I'll just call it Marilyn's motion is now the original motion. There's a substitute motion, and the question is whether to substitute.
Okay. So we will go to a vote to whether to substitute. Okay. I'll, and just, I want to make sure, because I'm not sure everybody, including myself, is following this completely. So if a vote for yes, you want to substitute means that...
This changes the order of, in which they're voted on.
And puts Jerry's first.
Right.
Okay. So all in favor of the substitute, which is Jerry's first, say aye.
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 Okay. And oppose? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I think we've sorted through that one. Now we'll move to Marilyn's motion. And all in favor of Marilyn's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No. And I'd like it with the caveat that I think this is a mistake for future councils to not have this information. I'd like that noted for the record, Wendy.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody. And we're going to move on to item 11B. Okay, 11B, Councilmember requests regarding investigation of the Brown Act violation. I'm just going to read the summary and then I'm going to step out of this.
Mayor, can I ask for a point of clarification before you proceed? I'd like to have everyone, including the city manager and the city attorney, sworn when we discuss this issue.
Well, okay, I'll address that after I read this, and then we'll see what's left.
Okay, I wasn't sure what order.
Okay. So the summary of this is, "Councilmember Kuzamoto, with the support of Councilmember Graham Mahia, has requested that the city hire an independent expert to determine whether a violation of the Brown Act occurred as a result of conversations amongst council members concerning the agenda item 10A that appeared on July 16, 2012, Agenda. City Attorney or City Manager," just so the public knows what was Agenda 10A.
It was the various items requested by Councilmember Kuzamoto, one of which you just finished discussing, and two others.
Okay. Okay. So at this point, we've got, the item that's here is talking about a potential Brown Act violation between myself, Councilmember Graham Mahia, and Councilmember Kuzamoto. At this point, you know, I'd love to be able to talk and defend myself through a Brown Act violation, but I'm going to have to recuse myself since I'm a part of this issue. And I don't know if there's any, you know, Councilmember Kuzamoto and Councilmember Graham Mahia, if you guys are going to go ahead since you're involved with this. Are you going to recuse yourself or are you going to stay in?
I'd like to ask for either the Sergeant-at-Arms to swear everybody in, or Sandy, if it's appropriate for me to do so. I think this is an avoidance of an issue that really simply just needs clarification. I don't think that there's anything that you would need to recuse yourself from. Sandy, what if, go ahead, Troy.
No, I just, before we go much further, because I don't feel comfortable participating in a potential action against myself, I want to step away. I just want to know before we set the, you know, the agenda on this, who is going to be here. I'm going to recuse myself. I'm not going to be a part of the discussion because it's about me, and I have an adverse interest in this, you know. And so are you and Warren going to stay in this or are you going to recuse yourself?
Well, I'd like to ask for a point of clarification, and are we allowed to do the swearing-in prior to council, I'm sorry, mayor recusing himself?
Like I said, I'm not participating in this, and I, you know, you guys take it upon yourself whether you want to participate or not.
All right. My point, my point of clarification, Sandy, is, is if, in the instance that is being proposed here in this agenda item, the three of us are conflicted out. Is that correct?
No, only one right now is recusing themselves. I'm still waiting for the answer to the other.
And that's, I'm asking for a point of clarification if I could. So if the three of us conflict ourselves out, it constitutes no quorum, correct?
Correct.
Is there any provision for a drawing of lots of the three people who are recused to pick one name and have that person still be involved?
That's addressed in the staff report.
Right. Well, I'm asking for the community benefit.
There is, under the Political Reform Act, a rule called the Rule of Necessity, but it only applies where the action of the council is necessary to the business of the city.
Okay. So...
And so, as with all conflict issues, ultimately, it's your decision as to whether you choose to participate or not. I put my perspective into the staff report, as you saw.
Right.
And I would just note that there is no clear necessity here. There is no rule of necessity under common law bias issues, which is really the main problem with a discussion of a potential investigation of a Brown Act violation by council members.
Okay, so in the instance that the three of us are conflicted out, as you're recommending, I don't think that if we've, if we have violated the Brown Act, that it should go unaddressed. So what is the option? Where would we go beyond this point? Because I see, I merely just wanted to discuss it to make sure that everybody understood the clarification that you addressed in this item. Is there any reason we're not having a staff report on this before people start recusing themselves?
Yeah, because I don't want to participate because I...
You're supposed to recuse before the staff report.
So I, that's why I'm just...
Okay. Well, here's my question. Who governs the council in the instance that three of them are conflicted out? Where would it go beyond that point? Because I don't think if there is a Brown Act violation, it should go undelved. I think that it needs to be addressed, and it cleared up, and then we move on. That was, that was the intent of this from the very beginning.
We're getting ahead of ourselves here because we're starting to have a discussion about the item. I understand the frustration. I'm happy to have a private conversation with you about it, but in terms of a council meeting, there has to be a recusal of those with a conflict and...
Have you already counseled anybody else that's involved in this, regarding this issue?
Wait, before we go in attacking the city attorney, just, you guys?
I'm not attacking anyone.
I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to ask one more time. Jerry, Warren, are you guys going to recuse yourself? You're named in this, and it doesn't seem that going down the path and being a part of it is the right way to go, but I think at this point...
Well, I can't answer whether or not I want to recuse myself until I know my options, Troy, and that's what I'm trying. And I'm not attacking the city attorney. I don't think I've raised my voice at all. I'm asking for points of clarification before I make my decision as to whether or not I'm going to recuse myself.
Well, the conflict is...
I'm talking to her, though.
You're a part of, well, I mean, you're not answering the question. Are you going to...
She's the city attorney. I'm asking for her advice.
I would be happy to take a recess and talk to you about...
Let's do that.
Conflicts issues. I'm not comfortable having a conversation in the context of a city council meeting on an item where I believe you have a conflict.
Right, right.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back. We're going to go ahead and come back from the break. We're still on item 11A.
B.
I'm 11B, I'm sorry. It feels like 11A. I guess Councilmember Mahia and city attorney, maybe we can pick up where we left off.
So I think where we left off is who's going to recuse themselves.
Okay. So we're at that question now. So I said I was going to recuse myself. Councilmember Kuzamoto and Councilmember Mahia, are you going to recuse yourselves?
No.
I'm staying here.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go back, and we'll go from there.
Mayor Protempo, I think you're now running the meeting.
I guess I'm up. All right.
You know what? Further thought, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself. Okay. I know. Okay. Let me take my notebook. Sorry.
So Madam Mayor, before we start, if I may?
Yes.
Okay. So, city attorney, I think that the decision to recuse or not recuse is up to the individual.
Correct.
And I want to state for the record that I was the recipient of a one-way transmission from Graham, from Councilmember Graham Mahia, at which point, when I understood the nature of the discussion, that I immediately told her to stop, stop, cease the discussion, and I terminated the talk about this topic. The other question I have is, the city attorney, who was aiding and abetting this crime to happen, I don't know why you're not recusing yourself when you told Graham Mahia that she's allowed to talk with me on this topic.
Well, first of all, I can't discuss with you in public the confidential communication that I have... that I had with Councilmember Mahia. You don't have authority to waive the privilege, neither do I. That would have to be a decision by the city council before I could discuss what occurred between myself and Ms. Mahia. However, I will-
What point are you referring, just recently in the back room or some point in time?
No. The conversation that you're referring to where you're accusing me of aiding and abetting a Brown Act violation. So I'm not, unfortunately, at liberty to defend myself and discuss what actually took place in that conversation. But even so, I'm not a council member, so the rules are different. I'm not voting on this.
Okay. All right. Could we have the staff report?
Do you want me to do it? You want to do it? Well, the issue is, was raised by Councilmember Kuzamoto, with the support of Councilmember Graham Mahia, to request that the city council hire an independent expert to determine whether a violation of the Brown Act occurred as a result of conversations among councilmembers. However, as Councilmember Kuzamoto just stated, he was only the recipient of information and did not engage in a discussion, so there were not three members that participated. However, even had the one-way communication of information been a Brown Act violation, there was a cure to that when Councilmember Graham Mahia announced publicly, prior to any decision on the item, that the communication had taken place. She did so publicly. The council then had their discussion and voted. So as the staff report lays out, I don't believe there was a violation of the Brown Act, and even had there been one, it was cured. So that's the background.
So the staff report, I think, speaks for itself. And for those in the community, I will read this one section. Even if there had been a violation, it would have been cured, as our attorney just said. The Brown Act provides that where a violation is alleged, the legislative body must be given an opportunity to cure or correct the alleged violation, and that the alleged violation is not actionable once a cure occurs. Whereas here, there is an allegation that discussion took place outside the public view, the cure is to conduct the discussion in public view, which Councilmember Mahia did at the last meeting, making all pertinent information available to the public. So it appears that there is no issue. Am I correct?
That's my view, but I assume that you want to hear from-
Yes.
-Councilmember Kuzamoto as well.
All right. Well, we've heard a little from you already. Could we hear from Councilmember Stevens?
I think that was my question, too. You didn't have three members in the original discussion, correct, of the council?
The way the facts were related by the councilmembers who allegedly participated, Mayor Edgar and Councilmember Mahia had a discussion, then Councilmember Mahia began by making a one-way communication to Councilmember Kuzamoto, who stopped her before responding and thereby averted what would otherwise have been Brown Act violation.
Very good. Okay. All right. That's it.
Okay.
Under Section 609 of proceedings and quorums, each member of the city council and city clerk shall have the power to administer oaths and affirmations in any investigation proceedings pending before the council. So invoking that right, I would like to place us all under oath. So I'm going to just read this. "You and each of you do solemnly state that the testimony you may give in the cause now pending before this council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God." And it applies to the city manager, the city attorney, and all of us. Do we all agree?
Can you give me the code section again, please?
Here, you can have it.
And I guess I'm a bit mystified by this. We're taking an oath for what reason?
Yes. To speak the truth.
I never speak anything but the truth.
Then no problem with the oath, then, right?
And what are we going to be speaking the truth about? There's this-
This matter that's in front of us.
That's right. But it is no longer a matter because it has been cured. Is that correct? And you yourself have said that you stopped any discussion, so there was not a Brown Act violation because you told Councilmember Mahia not to pursue that line of, isn't that correct? You just said that.
Let the City Attorney read the city code. And if I'm incorrect, I stand to be corrected.
Yes, it does say that each member of the council and the city clerk has the power to administer oaths in investigations or proceedings pending before the council. That would normally only apply in evidentiary matters or evidentiary investigations or hearings. I'm not aware of any precedent for applying that in the context of an ordinary Agenda item. I don't think it's-
But like I think we've heard before, belt and suspenders, it doesn't hurt, right?
I don't think it's something that a council member can unilaterally do.
And my question is, what is it that we're supposed to be telling the truth about? The recommendation here, we've already established that there has been a cure if there had been a Brown Act violation. You yourself have just said that you stopped the conversation so that there was not a Brown Act violation, so I don't know why we're continuing a discussion.
Because you asked me. So I'm asking the City Attorney questions. I want to put us all under oath. I want to have established it to the truth. But so be it. That is fine. If I have not the unilateral right, I guess I'll just ask the City Attorney, all that you've given us in the way of information, opinion, advice to a T, that is all correct and factual and on firm legal ground.
I gave you my best, best advice.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Back to you.
All right. Being as there is no issue here, we will move on. We'll bring the other councilmembers in and move on to item 11C. We're on item 11C.
Because I have other notes on me, too.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So now we're on Agenda Item 11C. Councilmember requests, Councilmember requests regarding prosecution of alleged municipal code violations relating to the trash franchise award. Just high-level, Councilmember Kuzamoto has requested that the city council take steps to determine whether prosecution is warranted for the alleged violations of municipal code in connection with the award of the city's waste franchise. I'm going to go ahead and start this in the same way I did the last time. This is an item that basically is coming, looking at three councilmembers that voted on the trash contract. The issue is, did we have a violation of the municipal code? And if so, should it be prosecuted? So that would mean that my interests are different than the city's. The city's considering on pursuing me, so I think for myself, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. And I would also ask, Ken and Marilyn, you guys are also named in there. You guys need to determine whether you have a conflict and are going to recuse yourself.
I will recuse myself also.
Okay.
I will also recuse myself.
Okay. So with three people recusing themselves, there's no quorum, and at this point, there's no item to discuss. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to council announcements. Who would like to go first?
I would, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Go ahead.
So one of the things, city staff, if we can look into, there's a bill going through the state, AB 1492, and it's called the lumber tax. I was made aware of this through communications from the Board of Equalization, Michelle Steele, who had sent some emails out. And it seems to me that that's something I would like for us to entertain as a body, as perhaps if we're not agreeing with that, write either a letter of opposition or maybe let the matter die. But I think it has an adverse effect on one of our local merchants, and I think it's just bad for the economy. So it's AB 1492. So we can look into that. And I think with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Back to you.
Great. Thank you. Who would like to go next?
It's all right. I'll go next.
Sure.
In the, since we had our last meeting, I went to the Orange County Fire Authority, and we had a Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And some of the things that, again, were discussed was the fire potential right now, so please be cautious on what you're doing as far as brush, or if you're up in the wilderness, be cautious of what's going on. The fire potential is extremely high right now. And we have all of our brush clearance teams right now on loan to other counties and other parts of the state. So it's something where we worked hard at trying to be able to develop these ground crews that could get in and help alleviate at the beginning and then fight fires. One of the beautiful things about it is that we actually have a recovery rate of cost. It's not just a joint, shared service that anytime we send our firemen, or in this case, any kind of trucks or fire crews, fire abatement crews, it's actually 40% of the monies are being recovered to the fire authority as a service, hire for service. And so this is something we went over in the Budget and Finance Committee, and it seems to be working out very well because it looks like they're all employed right now throughout the state and somewhere else. An additional thing that happened at the, at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I was nominated and voted as Vice Chair to the Budget and Finance Committee. And it was on a vote of eight in favor and one abstention. You're right. I was the abstention. It's a compliment to me, and I, and I take it very seriously. And for them to have that much faith in me, I'll do my best at working on that Vice Chair position. That's all I have.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Marilyn or Jerry?
I can go. I would just like to ask the Chief of Police, we had in our weekly a little paragraph about Detective Sorensen and the West County SWAT activities, and some good things came from that, so I just thought you might want to share that. Do you want me to give it to you?
Is that the activity about the-
Operation Halo.
Assisting Anaheim?
Yeah.
Just the West County SWAT team, which includes Detective Jake Sorensen, they've actually been quite busy, helping the city of Anaheim with the unrest that they've had in their city.
Right.
And they also worked with them in a, in a pretty large operation a week or so ago involving some warrant service-
Right.
-in their city.
And you did a wonderful job. I just wanted to give him the, you know, appreciation that he deserves for going above and beyond-
Right.
-to represent our community. Also, there's been some coyote attacks, and I would just like the council to think about addressing it sooner than later. If we are proactive, maybe less people will be losing their pets. Each time we've had this arise, we've waited, you know, until it got to a point where the community reached out to us and said, "You need to address this." And I just would like for us to think about doing it ahead of time so that maybe we can save some family pets. But in addition to that, potentially not put any resident at risk because they're getting a little bit more aggressive. And Rossmore has actually had, I believe, a jogger who was approached by a coyote, and the coyote wouldn't be deterred. So it's, it's becoming more and more of a problem, and I just would like to ask, if we couldn't agendize something to take action, as we have in the past, to curtail the behavior of the coyotes before it becomes more and more of a problem. I would like to say congratulations to Mr. Murphy, who's running for city council, and to Mr. Gross, who's running for city council. Good luck to you all. We have a couple, I'm sorry, and Ken, you too. Sorry about that. And to, sorry, I know. And Demi Devaney, she's also running, so I'd just like to wish you all good luck in the upcoming election. And I believe, there was one more thing. Let me just verify. I believe that was it. I do want to say that I was unable to attend vector control meeting. My son is going out of state for college, and I had some conflicts with things that I needed to do to get him ready and get him to school, so I was not able to attend. I just wanted to go ahead and make sure the council knew that.
Okay.
Well, last question.
Sure.
Whenever you want to agendize on the coyote issue-
Mm-hmm.
-why don't we have the people from the Long Beach Animal Control-
Yeah.
-to come in and give another, another presentation possibly at the same time.
Sure, we can do that. I just want to make sure that we take action as soon as possible. We only have one meeting a month now, and between now and then, how many animals might be lost or potential residents might be, you know, possibly attacked if, if it gets to that level? I think that's a great secondary thing to have at the meeting, but they are becoming more and more aggressive, and I just don't want to see anyone hurt, and I certainly don't want to see their pets be attacked and killed. So, thank you, Ken.
Okay. Marilyn.
Okay. Thanks. Last Friday, I attended the multi-city Chamber of Commerce Legislative Mixer out at the Joint Forces Training Base. It's always nice to hear from our legislators. Supervisor Morlock was in attendance, and Congressman Ed Royce was there, even though he is no longer our representative because of the redistricting. But he did express his dismay that he's not our representative and, and stated how much he's enjoyed the years that he did serve us and that he would certainly still be in contact with all of us. On Wednesday morning, I will be attending the 405 Working Group Meeting at OCTA, and along with Councilmember Gary Miller, and we will be expressing and voting, I hope, for continued freeways, no toll roads. I had stated at our last meeting that I would answer J.M. Eifler's comments, and those comments were regarding criminal penalties for violations of the municipal code. This was on Item 11C, but I will read part of this staff report, and it says that the city attorney consulted the city's Contract Code Enforcement Council as well, and outside council concurred that the act of voting on the waste franchise award was not a criminal violation of the municipal code and is not subject to criminal prosecution under the municipal code.
municipal code. This would be true regardless of whether the initial award of the waste franchise complied with city purchasing procedures or not. It is a matter of constitutional law, legislative immunity, and separation of powers. And for clarification, the finding is legally of no effect because it was appealed and the case was dismissed pursuant to a settlement prior to any final determination. So, I hope that that will put this to rest. There were comments made earlier this evening in public comment about Councilmembers not showing up to a special meeting that was called. I was on vacation, the staff knew I was on vacation, and I have to assume that that had been given, that information had been given to the rest of the Councilmembers, so that I was not, I would not be attending a meeting, whether it was special or regular, because I was on an annual family vacation with my family.
That information wasn't given to us, Marilyn, so just for your information.
With that, I'm-
All right. Like Ken, had a lot of Orange County Sanitation District meetings, both the board meetings and the committee meetings. We also are having, we had an open house a couple weeks ago with the Orange County Water District for tours. I would just put out to the community, anybody that's interested in getting a tour of the facility, we've given tours to almost 1,900 students out there and people in the community. If you haven't seen what goes out there, it's pretty incredible, and love to be able to help anybody in the community that would like to go out and check that out. I also attended the Legislative Affairs yearly August into the summer get-together with Marilyn, and it was a great event. I wanted to thank John Osborne and Judy Claboe from the Chamber, who coordinated with four other chambers locally to put that event on. It's something that, at the, it's always a great networking opportunity to talk with all the different business folks in the community, and it's usually the beginning of the political season, so you get to get an opportunity of seeing the rich Murphy's out there and all the folks that are out there shaking hands and getting to meet the people that they want to get to know, to represent. Couple other items, I, you know, I just wanted to thank the City Council, and working together in Jerry's item for a request for review. You know, it looked like it wasn't going to end up going down a good path, but I think that we got to see the Council working together. You know, John Osborne, who's the President of the Chamber, made the comment, you know, he wants to see us kind of going down the right path, and, you know, I think that, you know, directionally, I think that we've had a couple bumps over the last month or two, but, you know, we're still committed to be focused on the job that we're elected to do now, and that's to represent the people and to move the city forward. You know, we've got some very significant things coming up. The hospital expansion is one of the most important things that this Council, although in the beginning, not all completely together, that hospital expansion I'd love to see kicked off by the end of the year, and I know that that's going to be working its way to the forefront. The IT strategy was an item that was, I guess, in the top five. The general plan update, you know, working with the Planning Commission and the city and going through that process, and then probably lastly, the building and the residential and industrial building program that basically helped the community and tried to help stimulate the local economy. So, you know, I would just want to keep pointing people to the positives and try to stay focused on the positive and keep looking forward, not back. So, one of the items I wanted to add on to the agenda for the next agenda, the next Council meeting, if I could, I would like to have the item added for the traffic light fixes, that it was a kind of a, there was three specific items in that package, and we've heard this one before. This was the Lexington Light going straight through there at Lexington and Cotella. It's the Enterprise signal, potentially moving a signal down to Enterprise there, and it's the cutout into the 24-hour fitness so that we can have access without having to go to the corner and hang a U-turn. I've had some preliminary discussions with the elected folks in Cypress. I want to revive that. I'd like to see that come up on the next agenda item. Marilyn, I'm going to ask you in advance to that, to respectfully submit a request to the FPPC. I want to respectfully ask you to validate your issue of having a conflict because of where you live and-
Right.
...the relationships to that project. So, if we can start that in a parallel path, then obviously, that's a personal request, but-
Yes, and I will do that.
I would really appreciate that. I think-
Do you need support for this? I would like to lend my support for this to be on the agenda.
You probably shouldn't do that until you know whether you have a conflict.
Until I know whether I can, okay, all right. I'll support it.
Thank you, Jerry. And I think, I think for the most part, I guess, the capstone for this meeting tonight, I think, you know, what a wonderful Council meeting to be able to have the Olympic gold medal women's water polo team in here. I think that we should be very proud as a city that we've had the honor to be able to have them as ambassadors for our city. It was something to hear, you know, when they were talking about them on the TV while they're over there about training in Los Alamitos and the backstories that were there. That's something that all of us here should be very proud of. You know, that pool has went under a lot of scrutiny at different points of its history, and it, you know, sometimes it takes 14 years for vindication that that was a good investment that's finally popped out the other side. Not all projects like that get a gold medal vindication, but I'm just very excited. You know, I would go specifically to Angie and Cory, and Angie, in your previous world as the Parks and Rec Director, but, you know, we've done so much work over there. We want to make sure that we extend to the general and everybody over at the base just how thankful we are, again, and that sharing in this, and if, you know, we should probably extend some sort of a courtesy over to them for everything that they've done, too. I think that it's just, it's an awesome, it's been an awesome partnership there. With that, that's all I have. I'm going to go ahead and move to the items from the City Manager.
I don't really have a long report. We've had an outstanding summer. There haven't been any major catastrophes either with our recreation program or otherwise. You'll see our staff table looks kind of slim right now. We have hired an interim, as of tonight, or actually before tonight, under my authority, interim finance director, been on the job about seven or eight days now, so that's working nicely so far, and we are working hard, and it's been a good summer.
Great. Excellent. With that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to September 17th, 2012, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, and have a great evening.